Good afternoon, we're getting ready to start the agenda review session of the meeting. We have ordinances on second reading, we have ordinance 121-204, resolution to amend, resolution 0121-204. Which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, chapter 15, point 08, voca basic property maintenance code.
Mr. K, you've been working my attention, and had a notation in that clause that can include as a part of the notice. So I have a resolution to delete that language. If you adopt that, it will not be counted within the substance. And to see if you can adopt the ordinance, I find reading should be decided here, so I'll have to prepare to meet with you.
Thank you. We have ordinance 121-205, which is an ordinance to supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, title 15, build this construction. We have ordinance 121-206, which is a bond ordinance providing for generators for the water system by and in the City of New Brunswick, the county of New York State of New Jersey, allocating 1,850,000, therefore unauthorized additions of 1,850,000 loans or notes to finance the cost throughout. There is no ordinances on first reading, but you might need two resolutions. Resolution 121-370, which is a resolution to approve agenda amendment. Resolution 371, approved table 12713 to 122013. Resolution 372, resolution to authorize refund for the D-Tax sales certificate. Resolution 373, approve amendment of resolution 101-374, the reason is to pay legal fees in the amount of 841.50 to Lawrence Biederman Esquire, for Sergeant John Quaid in the matter of Anderson versus the City of New Brunswick, from 1,810.50 to 2,652. Resolution 374, approve amendment of resolution 101-375, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 1,113.50 to Lawrence Biederman, for Sergeant John Quaid, in the matter of Harold versus the City of New Brunswick, from 1,887 to 3,050 cents. Resolution 375, approve amendment of resolution 101-205, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 841.50 to Lawrence Biederman, for Police Officer Garrett Irkovic in the matter of Basim Handil versus the City of New Brunswick, from 12,925.75 to 13,767.25. Resolution 376, approve amendment of resolution 101-372, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 1,768 to Lawrence Biederman, Lieutenant Michael Bolavilla in the matter of Oswaldo Hernandez, Jorge Lopez Nieves, and Jorge Granados Hoya versus the City of New Brunswick, from 5,355 to 7,123. Resolution 377, approve amendment of resolution 101-348, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 969 to Monica Kinnon Cooper, for Police Detective Kenneth Aboli, in the matter of Hernandez, Lopez Nieves, Granados Hoya versus the City of New Brunswick, from 3,688 to 4,657. Resolution 378, approve municipal sponsor agreement with New Jersey Transit for the installation of two bus shelters, from Somerset Street. Resolution 379, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract 8-81-366, police and home security equipment and supplies statewide from east coast, emergency lighting, which is an authorized deal for wheeling engineer, for light bars and accessories for 11 vehicles, not to exceed 39,644.64. Resolution 380, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract 8-81-277, police and home security equipment and supplies statewide from east coast, emergency lighting was an authorized deal for ProGuard, for 10 ProGuard push bumpers, not to exceed 2,003.250. Resolution 381, and resolution authorizing body transfers, 2013 municipal budget. Resolution 382, advise and consent to serious and advisory council for appointments, the names are Eva Alford, Eduna Armstrong, Nina Barrow, Natella Malarsi, Sophie Paulino, Mary Farhan, and Antonia Martas, the term expires December 31, 2015, and Belja Santos, the term expires on December 31, 2014. Resolution 383, approve a board of contract with Propio LLC, to provide services, phone based language interpretation in Spanish and other languages, for the Department of Plan, Economy, and Economic Development, the term is 12 months, beginning on December 30, 2013, and ending on December 29, 2014, not to exceed $2,000, this is for an open. Resolution 384, authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Resolution 385, approve renewal of contract for the Dial and Write Program for 2014 with the State of New Jersey Department of Human Services, the term is January 1, 2014 to December 31, 2014, and the amount is 56,315 dollars. Resolution 386, authorized property deed for Board of Security, the location is 86 Remsen Avenue, and the amount is 879.24. Resolution 387, approve amendment of resolution 091-323, the reason is extension of relaxation of city noise ordinance, requested by Teichman Construction Corp. of New Jersey, and this is for set, the reason is settled at work at 135 Somerset Street, and the days are settled from January 4, 2014, to June 20, 30, I'm sorry, 2014, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Resolution 388, advise and consent to Board of Ethics reappointments, the names are La Nivel Escuela Barber, Reverend Norman Hamilton, and Dr. Rolner, it expires on December 31, 2018. Resolution 389, advise and consent to rent levelling, board reappointments, the names are Mollis Casta, who is the landlord representative, Wendy Stelatella, homeowner representative, expires on December 31, 2016. Catherine Pfister, First Alterate, Michaela Murphy, Second Alterate, and Student Red, and the term expires on December 31, 2014. Resolution 390, advise and consent to Library Board of Pro Street reappointment, Beth Pinte, and the expiration date of the term is December 31, 2018. Resolution 391, advise and consent to Park and Authority Board Board, release a reappointment of Anthony Caputo, and he expires on December 31, 2018. Resolution 392, advise and consent to the Liberty Arts Council Board, reappointment and appointment, names is Logan Gilding, expires December 31, 2016. Keith Jones II, and it expires on December 31, 2016. Resolution 393, advise and consent to Construction Board of Appeals reappointments, Peter Lampen and Daniel Torisi, and he expires on December 31, 2015. And resolution 394, advise and consent to Traffic Commission Board, reappointments and appointment, Edwin Kiff and Joseph King, and the term expires in December 31, 2015, and Carol Rayseide, and the term expires on December 31, 2016. We have an item for discussion by the council, which is council designation of liaison to various authority boards and commissions for 2014. That concludes the agenda review. By this time, we're going to start the meeting. The meeting is called to order. Your Chair, please, hold on.
Counselor Member Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Vice President Egan?
Here.
Counselor Member Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Member Garladi?
Present.
Counselor President Escobar?
Here. Please, we advise that the notice requirements of the Open Book Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied, in that the annual notice, which pays sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, mainly the one we're reviewing. Just for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, this calls for a moment to honor those Americans and Afghans who have lost their lives in Afghanistan, and I also would like to honor the lives of those who have been recently affected by violence in some of the communities surrounding, in New Jersey. Thank you. We have approved all of the minutes. We have the minutes from the nearest council?
No, we do not, Counselor.
Okay, so we have to be just...
We're not approving any minutes at this time.
Okay, so we have two that we need to approve for the next one?
That's correct.
Thank you. Have we done? To approve at this time, respond to the ordinances on second reading, the first one is an ordinance 121-204, resolution to amend, resolution 0121-204, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, chapter 15, point away, voca basic property maintenance code. At this time, does anybody from the council have any questions or any comments, anybody from the public who should address the council on these specific ordinance? State, your name, and address?
Good evening, members of the council, I'm Charles Cradaville, I live in the sixth ward of New Brunswick. I have a few questions about both of these ordinances on second reading, wanted to know what they accomplish, what will be changed as a result of?
You're talking about the voca basic?
Yes, the two, the deal construction.
I don't have the language in front of me, but on this first one, I'm getting some clarifying language to what's an existing provision, this type is the procedures of slavery. The second one provides for the appointment of a rent receiver. We have a number of properties that are in serious disrepair, and we thought it wise for the city to have the ability if we can, and there's someone available, that we could reach into their pocket and pay for that, rather than the taxpayers, paying for the enforcement and heavy fares.
Can you tell me whose idea this was?
Was it yours, or was it the mayor's?
It was the mayor's idea.
Okay. I have some concerns about this, given what's been going on with the Chief Housing Inspector. I'm concerned that it might give the powers to people who would abuse them. This person is suspended, he's been accused of very serious things.
I understand, but I'm staying with the ordinance, we're not talking about that at this point, so you can stay to the ordinance at hand, which is the voca, the changes are going to be amended.
Right, and so the Chief Housing Inspector would have a role in this process, correct?
Could you ask me? Are we talking about the first one?
I guess, yes, both really.
Which one are you, if you're addressing the first one, having to do with the unfit buildings, under, we already have an existing ordinance, this just clarifies some of the language. The most important part of what we've done is added a provision regarding how the property owner is to be served with a notice regarding an unfit building, and we added just a couple of standards by which to guide the construction official in determining which buildings are fit that criteria for unfit buildings.
So this is something that has been in place before, it's not new, it's just adding a...
The first one is just clarified.
Yeah, that's...
Okay, well, I will speak against the second one in just a moment.
Thank you. Anybody else have any specific, just go up to the microphone, say your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Miller, I'm 249 Delagance Street, Department 2, and I have come to the microphone to oppose this ordinance, for the following reason, one, I mean, I feel it's a bad piece of legislation, it, there's absolutely no provision in the legislation for recourse by the homeowner to a, an independent third party for inspection. And in addition, there's an obvious conflict of interest, the city condemns the property and the city is the receiver, okay? The mayor appoints a receiver, that's absolutely unacceptable, you can't, you can't have that in a democracy. If you want to make the state the receiver, that's a different matter, but you, you can't make the city the receiver and also the arbiter of the extent of the violations. In addition, there's absolutely no need for an ordinance like this, renters already have recourse to the courts, if they choose to, they can withhold rent, and if their landlord or landlady takes them to court to evict them, they can have a marini hearing, and that is precisely about habitability, the issue addressed by this ordinance, okay? There's absolutely no need for this, and there's almost unlimited potential for corruption, as the gentleman just stated. We have a house, a Chief Housing Inspector who has just been arrested for possession of 10 ounces of cocaine, he's, you know...
I understand, but this has nothing to do with that, this is something that has been, ordinance has been on the books for before, we just changed this on now?
No, 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 no.
And now you have receiver?
Receivership is a new thing.
We will change, change.
It makes it very easy for the city to take people's houses away from them, you know, with absolutely no legal recourse, and, you know, there, the point is that there should be regulatory recourse before the fact, and legal recourse after the fact, and we, we're very concerned that criminals are going to be coming into our houses, deciding whether there are, quote, violations, unquote, and taking those houses from us.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, are you object to the word of saying criminals?
Well, if somebody's...
But if people have, if people have, Ms. Gayton answered your question, she will answer that concern.
Again, if you're talking about the first one, and Madam President, are we talking about the first one right now?
Yes.
If we're just talking about the first one, that has nothing to do with receivership, we're talking...
I'm talking about the second, I'm talking about receivership.
No, I don't think so, gone to that one yet, but if you'd like me to address the first one, I can do that, and when we get to the second one, I'll address that as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Gayton.
Would you, the second one? Yes, the receivership, it's, it's, the authority is granted from our existing statute, and it says that the city may appoint a person as a receiver, and it's the court that governs receivership, not the City of New Brunswick. If you look at the statute, that's what the statute says.
Yes, the statute says that.
If, there, finish, I will, you have a chance, Ms. Gayton. Well, if the statute says that, we are governed by that statute, and that person is appointed, and it's a summary proceeding that, that follows strictly from the courts, not by the City of New Brunswick, we don't guide that, only the mayor can appoint someone to act as the receiver, but from that point forward, the court, it governs how that receivership proceeds.
Yeah, in theory, but the problem is that day to day, the court is not going to govern the receiver, the receiver is going to do what the receiver wants, okay, this is, there's a, probably going to be quite limited oversight by the courts, and, you know, there's virtually unlimited potential for abuse in this scenario, and I think everybody here should speak forcefully against this, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McHale?
That'd be something that what Ms. Gayton said typically in one of these situations, the property is going to be vacant, and I'm really talking about a receivership where you've got tenants living in there, you're talking about an empty property, and we think it's good business practice, if you can, if the property can be used at all, to have the record owner of the property help pay for the enforcement and the correction of the conditions, rather than the taxpayers have to do that, and that's what this is all about.
Name and address?
Hi, I'm Sean Lohan, I live in the sixth ward. I just have a question here about section one, it talks about this public officer designated, how does this change what we, what we currently have as an ordinance?
Which origins are these from?
Section one.
I'm sorry, if we're going to stay...
On section one. So...
Let's, let's stay with the first ordinance at this point?
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
Because I, I wanted to continue going back to the first one and the second one, because we don't have the second one yet.
Yep, so I'm just talking about section one, and this first part here, right, and I just wanted to know, what is this, what, this just looks like it empowers an official to, to make use of these various New Jersey state, state laws, what, didn't they already have that authority? That's what I'm trying to find out, is what's the difference, what difference does this create?
The statute says that, I'm sorry, go ahead, the statute says that the city, made by resolution, have those certain powers, and that's what we have done.
Right, in this ordinance?
In that ordinance.
But up until this point, the, the city did not have those powers.
We did have those powers, we just had not put in a resolution.
But you had them, but you did have them before, is that, but then, so then why do you need to do this?
But why don't you read to me what you're, what you're referring to, trying to...
Sure, sure, so it says that, well, it's simply the sentence, the sentence of the, you know, that's here, the construction official of the City of New Brunswick is hereby designated and appointed exercise the powers prescribed by this ordinance and by NJSA 40, you know, 48, so on, so on, so on, as determined by an appropriate resolution of the council. I'm just asking, is, is it the case that without resolution, the city did not have the power to enforce those rules? I don't understand why this is necessary, the city already had that in the books.
I think in, in the prior one, one, one part of that statute had not, one, one of those statutes were not added in the first one, in the existing one.
Could you tell us which part?
Well, I, I don't have the advantage of having it here properly.
It's, it's, it's 4048-2.5, and that's why it's on the line, which was being added.
So that's the one that isn't added to the...
That's very helpful. Can you tell me what part of the state code that covers? Like what, what, what new powers does the, does the housing inspector now have that they didn't have?
He doesn't have any at all, this was, this has been the board...
It's a construction inspector.
Bring it in, it's one of the...
It's a construction, not an inspector.
Oh, it's a, it's a construction, all right, fair enough.
It says construction, it doesn't say inspector.
I see, all right, all right, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Daniel Williams, 15 years after you know, and I also have a father at the 40, because I was a victim of that same... Actually, I was also a victim of that same ordinance, because in 2004, US Department of Justice filed a fair at law against exactly what y'all would say, you know, coming to people's house at all times of hours, whenever y'all want to show up, dragging us to City Hall, not in court, without going to the council, getting approved, not going through the city, I mean, not going through the court system, getting it approved, not going to the freeholders, getting it approved, just dragging you up here inside City Hall and violating every right that you have in your human rights, which I lived in Justice Department, deal with that, then turn around, and then go to your home, right here in City Hall, which should have been a court proceeding. Then, my other problem I had with that, if inspectors had that power, whose side are they going to be on, their friends, their family, or somebody they just want to go out of, because they're going to find example of what I'm saying. 79 Troop Avenue, back in 2005, was a condemned place, but the inspectors gave it a clean C.O. We moved in there, the guy won 1,800 dollars of money, with no running water, no pipes or nothing, sewage line was straight down in the basement, so I have pictures to prove that. 343 Seaman Street, when it was owned by a black guy, they wanted to tear the house down, they gave the guy so many summons, they wanted to lock him up, then when the other investment guy got the house, it only cost him $10 to get a permit, he didn't have to get no architect, he didn't have to get no plumber license, he didn't have to get nothing, all this guy did was did to fix up the house, next thing you know, he got tenants with a clean C.O. So I definitely have a big problem with that, and I would still have a problem, how can you bring somebody in the City Hall and have a trial? I have a big problem with that.
Thank you, sir.
I can't answer, because he said about 346 Seeman, I might remember, and Mr. Williams was the owner, I believe, of 146 or 130 Seeman, and he had a full, full array of rights, he had misrepresented to the city, his ownership of the property, he wasn't in ownership, he was a later prosecutor, he was found guilty, he, to his credit, if you make restitution to the city on it, but the matter was handled with great difficulty, but properly, by the law department and by the inspectors.
Okay, at this time, I don't want to continue having this conversation.
I just wanted to correct what he just said.
You will have a chance to add.
He just said, and I just follow up, what he just said, Judge Bates and myself both didn't file the documents that they said, that are false, so we do.
At this time, thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Feivix, 203 Howard Street in Rundick, and I'm very concerned about this ordinance, well, essentially, as I see it, I see that the City of New Brunswick connect, or is actually looking at the state statutes to create this particular ordinance, they are, New Jersey is, or, the City of New Brunswick is evoking New Jersey statutes annotated, title 40, chapter 48, dash, 2.3, dash, 2.3A, dash, 3, and 2.5, and also, New Jersey statutes annotated 2A, 42, dash, 114, et al. Well, all these statutes relate to multifamily homes, multifamily homes. The ordinance doesn't specify what multifamily homes are, it should specify that multifamily homes are three units and up, that's what the state definition is, so if we don't have that definition, the city can come into a single family home, or a two family home, and try and enforce these ordinances. So my suggestion, at least on that part, is to make sure that the city, if it's to abide by the state laws, specifically states that this enforcement will only be for state inspected housing, which is three units and up. Now, and also very specifically exclude one and two family homes, owner occupied or not owner occupied. The other comment I have is the appointment of the receivership. This city gave itself the power to have the mayor appoint a receiver. A receiver is a mortgage holder, a lien holder, a qualified entity relative to the private property, it is not the city, it is illegal to appoint...
Sir, that's part of the second order of ordinance, why you're talking about the receivership, so if you could wait until we go on discussion after we finish?
Okay, we could wait. Okay, very generally, we have inspection of three units and up, we already have the state, we also have the city inspected, why is this ordinance necessary?
Ms. Gayton, can you explain again that this is an ordinance that has been in place before, this is just changing language in the ordinance, but it has been instituted, you know, for a long time, this is just changing so, so language to it, like she explained.
That's correct, that's, that's correct. This, this ordinance is, concerns unfit buildings, and the additional statutory citation that you see, it just, it concerns the ability of the construction official, official, to send a notice to the property owner after having received either a petition from five people or making maturation of an unfit building, to go ahead and notice that person, the property owner, so that he can come before the, the construction official and have a hearing to either remedy the situation or demolish the building, or whatever the, the statute...
But this already is in place, this is a redundancy.
This ordinance is just adding some damage to it, given that...
It's already in place, we, if this city has a problem with a multifamily building, you can call the state official, he comes in and he'll, and he'll condemn the building, or whatever. he comes in and he'll condemn the building, or whatever is required to make it go into compliance. That's already in place. This ordinance is redundant. It has no need, there's no need for it. You have the answers out there already. Okay, I have, I think we should leave it as a status quo, just leave things as they are. This ordinance should not pass. It is a redundant ordinance, and it only benefits the city if it's passed. And at that point in time, the city will engage in being the receiver, and that is illegal. Because, and especially as a conflict of interest, it's very illegal, because inspectors can enrich themselves by benefiting of a takeover of a home. And as I know the corruption that exists, and I can assure you that that's going to be a common practice. So I don't want to see the city start owning my home for four summonses, five summonses, because I have a broken window and the tiles on the floor are cracked, and all of a sudden I have lost my home. This is not communism, this is America. We have Fourth Amendments, Fifth Amendments, Fourteenth Amendments, and we have protections as homeowners. We should be proud of owning a home, not have to be afraid of owning one, like the city is making us do. I do have a little comment about the conditions of the structure, and this is to exemplify the Mickey Mouse pusillanimous little details of things like lighting facilities. If I own a three-family and up, because there are lighting facilities, a 40-watt light bulb instead of a 100-watt light bulb, you have a problem. According to this ordinance, that would constitute a violation. It's subjective. This is pathetic. These examples are pathetic in here. Conditions for structure, some of these examples are really an indication of how hungry people are for owning other people's homes. And that's why this ordinance should just be terminated. It's not to pass. Allow the state to do its job, they've done adequately so far. The city of New Brunswick does not need to get involved. And for right now, Ellen, you're right there, and I'll come back for the receivership.
Hi, I'm Ellen Hein, I work with Joe Feibig as a research assistant. I reviewed the ordinance that you have advertised, that you listed in the papers, the first ordinance, and the title raises a lot of questions. It's listed as BOKA, Basic Property Maintenance Code. The BOKA codes are used by the state to enforce requirements in buildings when a permit is taken out, whereas property maintenance codes don't abide by state code, they would rather abide by the local codes. I think in this ordinance, you're seeking to use your state code enforcement person who is licensed by the state and enforces state codes in buildings that are under construction or where a permit has been taken out. You're using that individual to also do basic property maintenance code enforcement, and that seems to be a question of how one individual can wear two different hats, and how the cases that he's enforcing would determine which hat he's wearing at what time. So that sets up a big question for me. There's also some issues here about state statutes which would override the local statutes, the local ordinances, such as the state has a 10-year limit on CMO challenges, so that if someone purchased a home, and let's say it was a new home, had just been built and everything was approved by the building inspector, and they were given their CMO to live there, and they moved in and they lived there 12 years. On the 12th year, something started to fall apart, and the neighbors complained, as is listed in this ordinance that they could do and bring this action to the town. Now, that individual can say, but wait a minute, I haven't changed anything in my home. I've never gone and gotten a permit to change anything, because nothing's been changed. You can come and take a look, you can look at my original prints and see it's all the same. My CMO hasn't changed, it's still a single-family home, and I'm still the original owner, I've never changed ownership, and I never rented to a tenant. Therefore, the 10-year statute should apply, and that local official should not be able to walk in and say, well, wait a minute, sorry to tell you, five of your neighbors complained, and you know, this place is starting to look a little shabby, so we're going to have to put you in receivership. These are things that would be in conflict between the local and the state. Also, there's a one-year statute of limitation on enforcement of municipal ordinances. So some of these things that you say, well, the building starts to deteriorate, it doesn't happen in a week or two weeks. It's something that's long-term and progressive. So then you get to the issue of, are we outside of that one-year statute of limitation? And in most cases, I think if people gave testimony on when they noticed their neighbor's house starting to get shabby, probably they're way out of the one-year statute of limitations. The issue of the one individual wearing two hats is a very large issue, because they are licensed by the state, the local code, the local state code, BOKA code enforcer, the person that inspects the buildings as they're being constructed. And as a licensed official, that is a valued item, his license. So I think there's both a challenge to the individual who has the job and now has to safely juggle both hats to enforce using his license as given to him by the state and enforced by the DCA, Division of Community Affairs in Trenton, and then trying to balance his requirements with the town, which may be politically oriented or directed. So I think that is a difficult situation, both for the individual and for the job. Also, there's an issue of void for vagueness with some of the items that are listed here in the first column that was advertised in the newspaper, one through 10, it looks like. And a lot of the things are very, very subjective and don't pretend not to be, such as a statement of adequate lighting. Well, what is adequate lighting? Another thing regarding kitchens, how a kitchen must function, and it has to have a proper stove, and it has to have sufficient cooling. I think nowadays, with the way a lot of people live, there may be people in single-family homes that never use their kitchen at all, they eat out all the time, especially with single people purchasing homes and townhouses. Often, there is no need for using a kitchen or for having it function. And I've recently gone to open houses where there is no kitchen, they just have outlets in the wall in an area that would be a kitchen, so that you can plug in your microwave and your fancy gadgets, and you don't really have to have all that old-fashioned stuff used for cooking for a family. So I think a lot of this is very void for vagueness, to use a term that is used in case law, and I think there are some case laws on the book referential to enforcements in local municipalities that do reference the issue of if there is not a standard that can be used, that something such as adequate lighting, which could be subjectively interpreted, is inadequate to enforce an ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Mahan. I think that maybe council president misspoke in describing the first thing, it's exactly the same as what we have now. I just looked up the ordinance, because I think it's important, you know, it's important to me that I understand what the city council is doing, and I'm sure it's important to you as well. So I just wanted to let you know that basically, this underlying law, what it seems to do, and council can correct me if I'm wrong, is turn the cost of repairing, closing, or demolishing buildings into a municipal lien. So basically, the owner of the building would then also be responsible for its demolition and things like that, right? Because I guess that's not the case now. So for people who are concerned about the, about corruption entering into that process, this would basically make the penalty higher on the person who's losing their home. So I just wanted to bring that point of information to the council's attention. And this is a significant, this is a significant change in section one. Thank you.
Most of this has been in law for many years, can't tell you how many because I don't have the statute in front of me. We're not carving something new out.
Which is bad.
And it is probably true that in the case, if an inspector tried to enforce his own idea of what standard ought to be, a homeowner could come back and say, oh, there is no standard, and then the reviewing body, whether it be the construction board of appeals or the court, would probably agree with the homeowner. But I think we're creating this real pain here.
And right now, when we have situations where the city has to demolish or border off, we need to recoup that money, because that's the money that we are putting out there. And it's very, I know that there's some cases that it has been very difficult to get that money back from owners that we cannot find, and people that just, they just leave, and we just have to put everything away.
And there's unfortunately a huge inventory at this point in time of really rundown properties that may be partway through foreclosure or have been abandoned, and we've got to have the tools necessary to respond to that.
You have that? Thank you. We're taking...
The bat's on.
Excuse me, ma'am, you are a voter. If you'd like to address the council, you have to call me through the microphone, say your name and address. Thank you. This is a question.
Good evening, Charles Cradville. Again, I was very impressed to hear all the members of the public come out and speak so eloquently against this ordinance. I think, you know, if this is the mayor's idea, he should have come here to defend it tonight, because the defense has not been adequate. The folks here are raising very good points, and I think that the housing inspections and this whole construction code situation is at a crossroads right now, and we need to be very careful not to rush into giving more power to people who have a track record of abusing it. I think we need to examine what all of our options are before we just start passing these ordinances. Literally, this ordinance was passed just hours before Mike Mahoney was arrested, and this ordinance, these look like the types of ordinances Mike Mahoney would have supported. So I would suggest that the council not adopt them, and certainly not adopt them this quickly without proper discussion, without a proper defense being put up for why this is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I just wanted to, it's very serious that this ordinance has had been on the books for years, we're just adding just a small portion to the ordinance, it's not something that has been there before. So again, it's not something new, we're just adding one person. At this time, I'm going to take a motion to...
Two amendments.
To amend the...
Maybe one line has to come out.
We're taking that one line and adding...
The line is, the line is in section two, this language, it says, "Our existing section 140 contains the following." That was an editorial comment that was in there that shouldn't have been in there, and we're asking that he believe it at this time. Does it change what comes out?
Do we take a motion?
That's the only thing that comes out. That's the only thing that comes out, and the only thing that's brand new is New Jersey statute 40-48-2.5.
No, you've got to refer that to his game, which is... There may be a couple of others, but it's, it is not a significant rewrite of the existing statute, it's a clarification of the type.
Look, we're, just to, I want to, just to make clear, if we look at the ordinance, there are three things, three sections that we are making a change to. Section 1508-120. The only thing we added was the additional statute, NJSA 40-48-2.5. Everybody sees that? That's, that's already been in our existing ordinances, so we're just adding that one thing. On the standards to be applied, that's been, that's been on the books, but we are adding some things that may guide the construction official when looking at these buildings. If you take them one by one, no building would ever be demolished for just one thing. But when you look at, we're just giving them some standards to apply when looking at everything in totality. And the other change is in section three, where it talks about how the construction official is to serve the complaint, by regular and certified mail. And then the last part has to do with the powers of a construction official. And it's just, by statute, we just wanted to identify some of the things that the statute allows the construction official to do, such his duties.
Did we not delete something from that?
There was one thing we deleted that gave the construction official the ability to go onto and into the property. We didn't think that that was, we didn't think that that was correct, that the construction official ought to have that duty, ought to have that power. So we took that out. And that's, that's basically it. But this has been on books for quite, for a number of years, at least 20.
Any other things, or Anderson, any questions?
And this is the construction official, not the inspector.
Construction official, yes, not the inspector.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Move the amendment.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Regan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinance 121-05, which is an ordinance to amend, also.
You may proceed to adopt 304, because that amendment is really not a subsequent amendment. And that would take a new vote.
So a new vote down?
Yes.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Regan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Now we're going to an ordinance 305, which is an ordinance to amend, revise, general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title 15, Buildings and Construction. Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Gagian, if you could explain, this is a receiver, again, we talked a little bit about it already, but if you could go back and just give us an explanation and analysis of what this ordinance is talking about.
In New Brunswick, we have over 70% of the properties are rental properties, many of which are absentee landlords. Some of the properties have been abandoned, we cannot find the owner, they're in substandard condition, they need, and we have a very hard time because of all of these foreclosures with finding the owners. In those circumstances, where the bank have not taken it, it's very difficult, because the banks go from one bank and then get assigned to another bank to another. So we need, we need a vehicle to make the owner responsible for any conditions, substandard conditions that exist in those properties. And one of the vehicles that we are allowed to use is the receivership by statute. And the statute says that by resolution, the mayor may appoint someone who will be guided by the courts after, after the appointment, with making sure that the rents are paid, making sure that the building is repaired, someone who could go to court and make sure that there is a lien that may be placed against those properties, where the city has had to fix those properties. And that's basically what, what we are trying to do. We're trying to create a situation where there are tenants in those properties, there may be or there may not be, but we need a vehicle to make, to bring these properties up to code, and this allows the city to be able to do that. Thank you. Any questions on the phone or these specific ordinance?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. I want to say that what the council just did is something that they will probably regret passing that law, and I do think that you have to admit, as it's published in the papers, it said, accord, our existing law is this, and that's misleading to anyone who read it. The first one was a substantive change that was made at the last minute, it should have been renoticed, it's illegal if it's passed.
At this point, we've got a mistaken one.
Okay, well, I'll speak to the second one. You might regret this one too, because if a housing inspector got in here, they might, you might end up in receivership with the way the ceiling looks in this building, it's looked like that for a year. So I think you really got to be careful about what we're doing and what powers we're giving to who. I want to know how many other towns have an ordinance like this? Are there any examples near here?
I believe Hillsborough has one. I want to say Milltown, but it may be Millstone. And there are some others that escaped me, Charlie, but there are others.
I want to echo the comments that were made previously by Ms. Miller. This is absolutely unacceptable, it's an obvious conflict of interest, and...
We're talking about these ordinance.
Sir, but this is relevant to this question.
This is very relevant to this question. I agree with everything Ms. Miller said. The, the chief housing inspector since 1994, this isn't a low-level person. This is the chief. This is the person who was put in charge, and, and he is now, I guess, suspended, might get his job back, might not. And given the crossroads that the division of housing inspections is at, these major changes could, could very well come back and be something that the city regrets. And I think that the homeowner is speaking out wholeheartedly against this, and you should listen to them.
Yeah, this is, they found you within 15 B Hampton Road. So now, is that going to give them the power to do like they did me and contact the bank and get previous information about me, like Gayton and, or your attorney did? So is that going to give them that type of power?
Mr. Gay, I have another question. He's saying that in this ordinance, this receivership, they give the person the power to do as they say that they did to him, that they contacted the bank, they contacted to the information about him.
The proceeding...
If you would like to see it, I could pass it.
She's going to get to you and answer to the question.
We proceed with, Ms... Excuse me.
Like getting previous evidence?
Because she's going to ask me. I just wanted because I couldn't hear from the back people until they told me.
Yes. The proceeding under which we were able to take care of Mr. Williams' property was under the previous ordinance for unfit buildings where we, there was notice given to him. He had an opportunity to come to court, the construction official with his attorney. And to his credit, he did make some changes to some, 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 he remedied some of the violations to the property, but the city did not take his property. That property was taken through foreclosure, which had nothing...
Well, I have your...
But, ma'am, let me ask you a question.
Let's move on to this question.
I mean, I have your question. This receivership is, is different from the, the perceived, the unfit building ordinance. That's different. I, I don't know if I understand your question.
No, I don't, because I really don't understand yours because if the U.S. Department of Justice set a law and they sued Brownberg and they sued Somerset for what exactly what y'all doing right now, how are y'all above the U.S. Justice Department? How can y'all contact banks? And my boss, Mr. Hamilton, said he wants to request knowing what's going on with your property, and, and we're going to proceed with it anyway. And then when you finish with this previous information, tear it up. What kind of stuff is that?
I am not a...
Would you like to see it?
I am not a real, like, I told you.
Here, 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 just take a look at it.
In terms of the questions he's asking about why that, why the receivership doesn't have, what is the process? Maybe explain the process because apparently they, they were saying, eh...
Oh, the, the process is the mayor appoints someone. That somebody, so what could be, it could be, it could be anyone. It could be any, anyone in the public or a public entity. It could be an entity, a company who does nothing but receivership. That person gets appointed, and he is then empowered to file a summary proceeding in the, in the Milosek County Superior Court. That means he has to bring an ordinance show cause, and all of those documents have to be filed with the court. And then he's under the power of the court. He has to, everything he does then has to be approved by the court, not by the mayor, not by the city attorney's office, but by the, by a judge.
That's what I saw. So then, then how did mine end up in here and not in the court?
Because it was a separate, it was a different proceeding.
Different procedures. She said that I was...
I don't see the difference in it.
These are...
Because, well, that trial, that trial I went through here should have been in the courtroom. I've been in home improvement for 27 years, and out of the 27 years, the violations I got end up in court, not in City Hall. That was a violation of my constitutional and my human rights, of bringing me in here and violating my rights like they did. And then turned around and condemned my house because of this here racist Mike Mahoney that, that put this dog on the scene together because I got it on tape, where they had this private meeting of what they're going to do. Glenn Patterson, one of your city councilmen though, when they came after him, I had to come at his, and I'm the one who helped him sell his house because they was on him. This stuff right here with these guys and that corrupt system they got, and they bringing in so much money in with the city and she down with it that y'all turning up eyes to everything. That's the bottom line. It was a violation of my human rights, my civil rights, and, and what the U.S. Department said in 2004. That's why they passed the law. But y'all taking the law that the U.S. Department put there, like, it doesn't exist. Forget what they said. That's why they sued Somerset and Brownberg for the same thing that y'all doing right now, violating residents' rights here in the city of New Brunswick. Coming to their home when y'all want to come home, come there like it's y'all house, telling us what book to read, what movie to watch, and then if you don't like it, shut your house down. But if you got a friend that's kicking you out some dollars, they could have something looking like this here to get a CO. And I got proof of that before that, the pictures of people houses getting COs that weren't even qualified for nobody, not even a dog to live in, but got clean COs. They got pictures to back it up because I, I was doing the work, and the only, only thing I had to do was do patch down, is on who they know and who they don't know. If you don't pay the plate, your house getting condemned. And before I lose a blind brother in my body, I'm going to prove it to the Justice Department what's going on here. That's why Mike got what he got because God don't like ugly. The way he did me, look what God did to him. Came right back. He said, I had bikes in my yard. He had cocaine in his. Woo!
Yeah, I'm, oh, I think there were a couple of points that I wanted to raise before that I, I didn't raise. Um, there is, there is...
Does someone reference your name at this point?
Sorry, I stated my name and addressed before, but I'll state it again. Dr. Susan Miller of 249 Delavan Street, apartment two, New Brunswick, New Jersey, 08901-3019. Okay? All right, now, the, there are a number of problems with the law, okay? You said that part of the purpose of the law is to appoint a receiver in the instance that a building is abandoned, okay, and you can't find the owner, okay? That's a completely separate instance from one in which there's a renter in the place and the, the renter needs relief, okay? Why are these two separate kinds of circumstances being written into one law? There's absolutely no need for a law appointing a receiver in a case in which there's a renter in a, in an apartment. The renter, as I say, can withhold rent, and if the landlord or landlady attempts to evict them, can request a marini hearing. And if they win, if the courts decide that their place is uninhabitable, they can award them the rent money that they might have otherwise paid to be used for repairs, okay? So absolutely no taxpayer money is used. The landlord's money is used to pay for the repairs. There's absolutely no need for this ordinance. Can you explain to me why you have placed rental housing in the ordinance? Why rental housing is mentioned?
There are some situations where a renter may be in the property and the property is, is substandard. And so this, this ordinance allows the receiver to collect those rents and, and may be able to apply some of those rents to the, to make the repairs so that the renter is living in a better, better condition.
Okay, but you haven't addressed the, the whole question of a marini here. You, you just ignored what I just said about a marini here. What's the problem here? Why do we need this? If the, if the tenant can get a marini here?
Madam, there are some tenants who are elderly and not in habit with the law to the extent you are, and they don't go forward to do that. This is an additional tool. It is not a cure-all. It's an additional tool for the city to try to get a property back into shape.
Okay, well then, why not inform tenants of their rights, okay? There's absolutely no need for an ordinance that allows the city to take properties away from people, okay? And furthermore, okay, to reiterate what Mr. Williams said, we, we have properties on our block that are overcrowded. There are forty, fifty people living in these places. They have, some of them are living in the basement, which has no bathroom. There, there are people living in the attic, which also has no bathroom. They're using the backyard as a toilet. Okay, the city does nothing about this in spite of repeated complaints. Okay, if the city is really concerned about the quality of rental housing and the standard of living of tenants in this town, why don't they do something about overcrowded housing? These places are tinderboxes, and we know already what, what happens in many instances when overcrowded houses go up. In, in 2004, the, the fire chief was killed saving fifteen people in an overcrowded house.
You're addressing, you're talking about Mr. Black, who's very charged with that department at this moment. Do you direct me what he says?
Okay, well, the point is that there are many, many overcrowded houses in the city. The city does nothing about it. Please don't hide behind protecting renters. This is, this has nothing to do with protecting renters. This has everything to do with trying to take people's houses away from them, okay? And it's not that it's never happened. We have an example of it right here. There's somebody who's going to speak who nearly had her house taken away from her, okay? And we certainly don't want the fox guarding the chicken coop. We have conflicts of interest in this law. As I say, there's no provision for recourse to an independent third-party inspector. There, the, the city appoints the receiver day-to-day. The courts are not going to get involved in the, the process of receivership. I mean, in fact, the, the city can do whatever it wants, and people will lose their houses. This is going to be the ultimate result. And the, if you want to protect the city from abandoned buildings, then write that into a separate ordinance. There's absolutely no need to protect renters with an ordinance like this. Thank you.
I am resident of New Brunswick. I admit, my residents happen to be from out of town. However, I would like to make a point. And this here is the house of New Brunswick. We are sitting here in the family room or the living room of New Brunswick. And yet I see a dilapidation above the metal window there. I see a crumbling ceiling up above. I see crumbling walls here. I see crumbling walls maybe over there. Well, I would like to ask you this. If you're not maintaining your own house, how do the people of New Brunswick expect you to manage there? Okay? That's my main point. Here, that's my main question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Joe Thaddeus, 23 Howard Street in Brunswick. All right. I would just like to understand something very clearly. This ordinance that was just passed, the first phase of it, are single-family homes affected with this ordinance?
Sir, we, we are on the second one at this point.
I understand, but I have a question. I have a very simple question. Is a single-family home affected by this ordinance? Let's say we have a boarder, somebody that's a common practice in New Jersey, people to collect a lot of stuff. And, and is this single-family home going to be affected with this ordinance?
Mr. Gay, and lots of the other questions that we...
It will be affected.
You say yes. As we said, Mr. Thaddeus, this is an ordinance that's been on the books for well over twenty years. And yes, it affects single-family homes if they are in dilapidated conditions, if they are in substandard conditions. If, if they're not habitable properties, yes.
I understand. Of course, examples like now, if my bathroom doesn't have adequate ventilation, it's doomed for condensation. That's what your ordinance is doing.
Sir, um...
Right. Is a two-family home, owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied going to be affected by the ordinance that was just passed?
Yes, but not because of the ordinance.
She just, she just stated that, yes, sir, the, it is, you know, part of it. At this point, we are on the second one, and I know that you have a question about...
Right, you're correct. It was an effect, but it was not an effect in New Brunswick by New Brunswick inspectors or Boca Code officials. It was an, is, is a state issue, not a New Brunswick issue.
This ordinance, like, the one that was just passed, that we had a discussion, as if I heard you stating correctly, this has been in the books for over twenty years. So it has been part of the city or books in the...
What has been on the books, ma'am, for twenty years is that the state control multifamily housing, not single-family housing. But now, the city of New Brunswick took it upon itself to blend in unlawfully, may I add, the fact that single-family homes and two-family homes are also going to be blended into this mix. So now, all housing, and if I'm correct, according to the city of New Brunswick, all housing will be subjected to these small, little, miscellaneous errors in a house. This, I have in this, in my house also, I have a little bit of chip paint off my walls. So am I going to be condemned because of that?
No.
I think that...
Of course, but it allows an inspector to do so if he wants to give you a hard time. I've also gone through scams. I, I'm a seasoned landlord in this, in this city. I've lived through a lot, I've survived in New Brunswick. This is not what homeownership should be about. It's not about survival and dodging the bullets. This, this city is in great violation right now. The statutes that you're, you're evoking are state statutes. They're not to be converted into ordinances and for you to decide what the laws are going to be. You have to follow state statutes, and you have not followed state statutes. You gave yourself the power and empower yourself to condemn single and two-family homes, which are out of the purview of the state, the state guidelines. So this is a pure case where people have to be afraid of owning homes anymore. People have a few violations, and everybody has violations. Homes are very susceptible to breaking down. They break down more often than cars, and it's easy to own a home. So with this kind of an environment, this is getting to be, I come from a communist country. In a communist country, City Hall takes over. They want to take over your home. Is that what this is becoming, a communist estate in New Brunswick? All right, the next thing I want to bring up is the quarter-pointed receivership. The mayor is to appoint the receiver, if I read ordinance correctly. The mayor should not be appointing the receiver. The court should appoint the receiver. And the receiver should be someone who has an interest in the property, not someone who's going to benefit by ripping some poor old lady off because she cannot clear, clear the sidewalk and she gets five summonses in a year. And that's what's going to happen. That's reality. I do understand that there are problem homes. You want to go and attack those problem homes, do it through the courts, but don't, this kind of an ordinance is an open gate for corruption, a giant open gate for corruption. You cannot, as a city, you cannot give yourself powers that are, that do not, that are not given to you by the state, and you have. Again, the city should reconsider its decision. The state is the one that's responsible for multi-level or multiple, multifamily homes. Leave it at that, and if you want to go attack the one and two-family homes, do it on an individual selective level through the court system. You still have those powers. You can take those people and force the ordinances upon them that are already in existence. This ordinance that you're propagating here is unnecessary for the city. It's necessary for the state, not for the city.
Thank you.
And I really doubt, I, as, as it's not a really popular ordinance, no one else thought of this little devious way of taking people's homes. People out there are terrified of the fact that the city of New... People out there are terrified of the fact that the city of New Brunswick, with its reputation, is going to steal their home. This is the environment I live with. This is what my neighbors are talking about. The city's going to steal my home. Is that what you want to be regarded as? City steals their home? Please, have a conscience. Thank you.
I'd like to address the issue of single-family, two-family second ordinance in the newspaper. Ellenheim, and it's 205 Howard Street. I work with Mr. Thaddeus as a research assistant. The advertisement in the newspaper for the second ordinance quotes NJSA 2A:42-114. And if you look up that citation, you'll find it's listed as Article 9, Multifamily Housing Preservation and Receivership. And then in the citation, it lists short title, Multifamily Housing Preservation and Receivership. So they are stressing the fact that this is for multifamily homes. And the reason why is because the state's intent was to give another avenue to renters of buildings who were not having satisfaction for maintenance done on their units to seek another avenue, namely the receivership provision offered by the state. Receivership generally refers to a procedure that's reserved for parties with an ownership interest, ownership or possessory interest in the effects of tenants or mortgage holders, and gives them an ability to see the property improved. In this particular case, that burden is being shifted to the mayor. So it's the mayor and the political people in the town that are having control over what happens with the building, which is a complete shift from the whole concept of what receivership is about. If you go to the statute book and you read the description for 2A:42-114, you'll see that there's a whole description about the Assembly Appropriations Committee and how they envisioned this state statute to work. They also include oversight by the Department of Community Affairs in Trenton, not the local mayor. I think if you were to read what the state statute says, which you have quoted in your advertised newspaper article, you would find that the local ordinance dedicates tremendously far from the state's intent, and I think that's dangerous. The state also lists the situation where the municipality may hold a tax sale certificate. I don't think that was in any of the language in your advertised article. The advertised announcement also lists that the triggering event could be four violations in a twelve-month period or six violations in a two-year period. I think there are probably residents in this town that have received four violations in one visit from the construction official. So that would be a triggering event, that their property could be put under receivership immediately based on this ordinance as it reads. The whole intent of the state's empowering statutes that the municipality is relying on when they attempt to enact this ordinance or the ordinance that you'll be voting on tonight is far too much of a deviation from the state's intent. And for that reason, I would say that this should be reviewed once again by the legal department, and language should be placed in the local ordinance that protects residents who should not be included in this, such as the single-family and two-family homeowner and the owner of a commercial enterprise that may have residential included. I'd also like to stress that in the state statute, they do mention that the receiver may be the mortgage holder, and it would stand to reason that somebody with an interest, a financial interest such as that, would be far more likely or far more qualified to participate in any sort of action such as this than the mayor's appointed individual. Thank you.
Based on the information that Mrs. Parvick, I hope that I'm pronouncing it correctly. Okay, Hine. Oh, Hine. It's Thaddeus Thaddeus, Ms. Hine. I'm sorry. Based on the statute and the interpretation that she has of the statute, what is your interpretation? Is it the same? Is something that we are in compliance with what we're doing right now?
I believe we are, but, you know, I yield to the council. If you'd like for us to take a look at it, to make sure it's in compliance with the state, then I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Parvick?
Good evening. Once again, thank you for that question, and I think that answer tells us that, you know, if you're not convinced that this absolutely needs to be done tonight, you should hold the ordinance. You know, you carefully looked at other ordinances that citizens brought forward earlier this year, and it took some time to get them passed and time to get them right. Now this is an ordinance that is springing up out of nowhere, and there's no one here to support it. So I think that we should hold off on this and, you know, give the legal department time to really see if it's in line with what the state government approved. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm just trying to think, I'm still from out of town here, but that statement is inaccurate. But I do have, that's your opinion, but I do have... I would like to give it a chance for the local department to review it before. That's my, at this point, my opinion, if it's possible. There's no need to move this, to rush into this, that would be my suggestion. Is okay with the rest of the council? Mr. Hamilton?
We'll certainly look at it, but if you look at the effective date, if the mayor doesn't sign it, we've got ten days to look at it between now and the time that he would have to sign it, ten days, and come up with the answers that you want, which I think we know already, but we'll certainly check it again.
Yeah, I think that I would suggest that we do that, that we wait and we review it, just to make sure we have any compliance.
My suggestion was that you adopt it and you just do that.
No, I'd rather not.
You do what you want to do.
I'd rather just wait. My suggestion is to wait, and then we get a right... You know, we, I know we have a right, but we have all the information that we need in order to make it, to make sure that we are in the same, in compliance with the same. That would be my... So at this point, that's what, we're going to hold it? What, do we need to go motion?
No, if you do that, you kill it, we have to start over again. That's all right.
Yeah, that's fine.
You can move to hold it, you can move to defeat it. Instead of going to go back, don't defeat it.
We're going to hold it, yeah. So can I have a motion to hold it? Will you hold it?
I'll hold this second. Yeah.
Thank you, local.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi? Council President Escobar?
Yes. New Brunswick Resolution 306, which is a bond ordinance for...
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make a comment about, I'm happy that you're going to hold it, the receivership. And I just wanted to make the comment because I own the house on Joyce Cover Avenue for twenty-five years. I no longer own it. I was forced to sell it by the actions of the Chief Housing Inspector. And you can pass all these ordinances, but it's actually what is going on with the construction code officials and the housing inspectors, they are doing what they want to do, not abiding by any ordinances that you pass here. Because my experience was to actually have the Chief, Michael Mahoney, the Chief Housing Inspector, along with a New Brunswick police officer, suddenly show up on my front porch, bring fourteen city employees in city cars, wearing city uniforms on the payroll, and pin me up against my front door. And this was with no notice whatsoever, and this was in a single-family house with no tenants. And when I looked at them, I said, what is this about? Michael Mahoney told me, we're here, not, we are, they are on the payroll. The taxpayers of New Brunswick are paying for this. They're on the payroll. They're in the cars, they're on the payroll, they're wearing uniforms, but they're conducting their own business. Because their own business was, he announces that he owns a company with Brian D. Filippo, who was a city police officer, and I believe he worked for the prosecutor's office too. And they are there because that company wants to offer me a contract to buy my house with no notice whatsoever. But you know why I was pinned, why there were city of New Brunswick employees pinning me up against my front door? Because the amount of the contract, they want to buy my house in 2006 for $3,000. I was supposed to, and the contract was already written and made out. Now, do you think they went home and spent time on the weekend making that contract? No, they made it in the city offices, like in this building or the new part of the building. That's what they're actually doing. They wanted me at that moment with no notice whatsoever to go right here and sign that contract. I'm going to sell my building for $3,000. And that's what they were doing. And when you say, we're going to have the supervisor, the receivership, oh, it's not going to be the housing inspector, there won't be any conflict because it's going to be a construction code official. Well, isn't Ken Kruh one of the construction code officials?
Mr. Shon is a construction code official in the city of New Brunswick.
And also Ken Kruh, doesn't he work for that park? Because he was one of them. He was in on it, on this thing. They were all cooperating, and that's what they're spending good time doing. And the house that someone else mentioned that badly needs inspectors to go in because it's only supposed to have tenants on the first and second floor, and they have people living in the attic, which you can see, the lights are on at night. They have, at that time, they had a family in the basement with young children with no toilet in the basement and the neighbors on both sides, and I spoke to them a few times. They were insisting that those children were using the backyard as a bathroom. And even then, I talked about that house, which was on my block, but those inspectors were not interested in going to that house, and I don't think they ever had. So that was 2006, 2007, 2008. I don't think anyone's ever gone to that house. Instead, they're spending their time going after the houses that they themselves want to own. And to me, I see this receivership a different way because I see this as another tool to say, if you don't sign that contract and let me buy your house for $3,000, we'll put your house in receivership.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all we have. New Brunswick Organized 306, which is a bond organized, provided for generators for the water system via the city of New Brunswick in the county of New Jersey, appropriating a million eight hundred and fifty thousand, therefore authorizing the issues of one million eight hundred and fifty thousand bonds, and let's to find out the cost of the rock. Mr. Latner?
Yes.
There were some questions at the last meeting related to do with, actually partly related to affect of this, part of this money that we want to be used for that. Do you have it?
Project scheduling?
Yes.
The generator for the water treatment plant will have a cost of $650,000, and it will take forty-four weeks to install from the date that we authorize engineering of the project, of which we have not done yet. And then the DNR Canal generator has an estimated cost of 1.2 million, and that will take, it'll take fifty weeks from the date engineering is authorized.
And this is also part of this money we're going to get a grant from?
We're getting grant money in the gross amount of $750,000 against the cost of both projects combined. On a separate matter, you approved this last week as a Chapter 159 in our last meeting, but we also got some grant money to put generators at three firehouses as well.
Does anybody from the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance? Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening, Charles Cradville, 6th Ward, New Brunswick. I'll be quick. I'm glad to see this is moving forward. I wanted to ask, though, was there not already a diesel generator at the water treatment plant?
The answer is yes, we're putting a second one in for redundancy purposes. Smaller, but a second generator, yes.
And so there've been problems with the first one?
He didn't say that there was a problem.
I remember her case, Sandy, there was a big problem.
He said that it's to reduce redundancy. So this is what we're going to have. We've been before, we've got a grant, and we're going to have one, a second one, yes.
Right. And so I just want to ask, how old was the first one when it, you know, failed?
My resident.
Yeah, excuse me. The emergency generator that's currently at the plant was installed, I believe, in 2007. The generator is exactly as its name states. It's an emergency generator. It's not meant to operate for five consecutive days, as was the case with Hurricane Sandy. It's an extremely expensive, intricate piece of equipment. It's heavily alarmed. The problem with the generator that we had after Sandy was it developed a leak in the coolant system, which completely shut the generator down. The reason for the second generator, as Mr. Lachlan said, is strictly for redundancy, to have two standby generators that would operate independently of one another. So as the load of the plant would go up and down, each generator would come on and give the other one a chance to rest.
Okay, and then just the final question would be, why now? Was this something that could have been a part of the city budget process, the capital budget? Why is it now?
Well, a project like this can always be part of the capital budget process, but the fact that there's $750,000 worth of grant money certainly makes it easier to award the project now. But the generator, which is one day expected to be installed at the DNR Canal, was authorized for engineering back in 2011. We've spoken about the modernization of the rural water pump stations. On a number of occasions here, we've decided to break it up into two phases. The electrical improvements were done in the second phase. We spoke about, first phase, excuse me, we spoke about that. That work was completed this year. The second phase were the pumps and motor engines replaced, that is soon to be, come before you for authorization to bid. The issue of the generator at the DNR Canal was pushed to the second phase of the project. We had some issues with the footprint of the DNR Canal pump station, and then adding a very large generator to that footprint. If you recall, we had many meetings here talking about the expansion of the footprint of the sewer pump station in Buckloue Park and all of the issues related to that. So we've been working towards a design for a generator at this location for two, two and a half years now.
Thank you, Mr. Latner. Mr. Cradville?
Okay, and so is there an approximate date that these, date of authorization might happen? So if this is adopted tonight, when do we expect the forty-four weeks and the fifty-eight to start?
Forty-four weeks and fifteen weeks.
Once engineering is authorized. Engineering is not being authorized this evening. You're going to expect us to either go out to bid for engineering or at least secure engineering through a fair and open process, and we're not doing that this evening.
But once it's been, when it resets, then it will be forty-four weeks.
And that raises just one more question. So the engineering, is that going to cost additional money? Is that going to be borrowed, bonded? Or is that going to come out of the budget? Where's the funding for the engineering going to come from?
The engineering will come out of the bond money that's being authorized tonight.
Thank you very much.
Would you take a motion to?
Move the order?
Exactly.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. This time we have Resolutions 370 to Resolution 394. Does anybody, any member of the board wishes to address the council on any of these specific resolutions? resolutions?
Good evening, Charles Cradville, once again. I'll try to be quick. Number nine is new bus shelters on Somerset Street. Can someone explain where those would be and what purpose they serve?
Mr. Gold, he's here.
I can, I don't think it's gotten to Mr. Golden's office yet, but we received a, an agreement from New Jersey Transit, excuse me, and they've expressed an interest in adding two bus shelters on Somerset Street on the northbound side where Somerset intersects with George Street. This is a typical agreement. They will be happy to fund the purchase of the shelters and do the installation. They then require the municipality to sign an agreement that we will maintain the structure for a period of time, and that is what we're asking your consideration this evening, is giving us the authority to enter into this agreement. Now, I will tell you that I, the matter did not come before the city engineer, and I have a phone call in to Mr. Patterson, who's sometimes involved in these kinds of projects, and I just want to make sure we're all on board with accepting the shelters at this location. I'm sure that the shelters can't be a bad idea at this location, but I just want to make sure some of the other offices have vetted the issue first. I do recommend that you approve by resolution the authority to enter into the agreement when we're ready to do so.
Thank you very much for the thorough answer. Number 19 is the ethics board reappointments. Can somebody tell me if any of these individuals work for the city or any of the government entities here?
Yeah, Ms. Estana Barber works here. I'm trying to remember who the other members are, I don't believe any of the others.
Reverend Laurie Carrington, she does some work for the city, and Dr. Moldar does some work for the city.
And what role does Ms. Estana Barber serve?
One of six members.
I mean, in the city, what's her job?
Her job title is she works in the mayor's office.
Okay. I would respectfully advise against appointing someone who works for the mayor's office to the ethics board. I think the point of the ethics board is that they're independent and they don't get a paycheck from the city. I'm actually surprised that that's even legal, but I would, just, just, just for the perception, it would make sense not to have an employee of the mayor's office serving on the ethics board. So I would respectfully ask that you hold that particular appointment and find someone who is not, does not have that conflict of interest.
She has things that we have, she has to be there, she has to be there for it, so it's not that important, she got to be there.
But you don't have to.
She's a resident of the city, and that's you, you know, I respectfully listen to your concern, but you know, I don't see any conflict of interest there.
You don't, you don't see how that could be a conflict?
But thank you for your, for your concern. Anything else?
I'm just, I'm sorry, that's a pretty obvious conflict to me, if someone's getting a, drawing a paycheck from the city government, working for the mayor, as an elected politician. It doesn't make sense for that person to be in the ethics board.
There's like six other members there, I would say that if every member there was an employee, then I would say, yeah, there is something there, but she's just one of six other people out there, but thank you for your concern.
Okay. And I wanted to ask, on number 22, it's the appointment of Anthony Caputo to the parking authority board, and I wanted to ask how confident the council is in that appointment?
It's there? It's extremely far.
Okay, my, my concern again is a conflict of interest. This is a person who has, he's the police director, so he obviously has...
That's not the Anthony Caputo.
Yeah, there's two.
So it's the police director. So while it may be legal...
There's just one...
I believe by statute, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe by statute, the police director can serve in that capacity on the board.
Again, you don't have to appoint them. You have a choice here, and I'm just raising the idea that, that someone who has such a daunting, challenging job, managing an entire department with 140 sworn officers and other employees, and frequently, you know, gets into sticky situations, that's not the person that you want in charge of the parking authority. You want someone who's uncompromised and not busy with their own city department that they, that they run. I mean, there's value to consulting with a person like that, but there's not value to putting them on the board and giving them one of five votes, I don't think it's right.
He's not in charge of the board, he could be a member of the board.
Right.
So he's not in charge of the board.
And I think it's, I really think that the parking...
I just want to make that correction.
Right, okay, well, I think that the, he's one of five members, and that's, those five people are in charge of this multimillion-dollar enterprise, some $400 million in debt that the city has co-signed. I don't think the police director should be, you know, taking on a second responsibility. He's got his hands full with the police, and that's, that's his job. If the parking authority needs to consult with whoever the police director is, they should do that, but they should not put them on, on the board, and you should not allow that to happen. I know Mayor Cahill probably wants this person on the board, but the city council has to approve, and I urge you not to approve. This is a five-year appointment, he doesn't, he can't serve two masters, there's a clear conflict here, he should not be on the board. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
(INAUDIBLE) 291 St. Rosewood. I have one question. You don't think that Anthony Caputo's hands are already full?
The people's hands are probably full, or hands are full.
I'm asking, you don't think that his hands are already full enough with the issues that's been in the police department? I just, it's a simple question, you say yes, no?
I think that if he's, you know, if he's appointing him, has been there before, he has been able to manage it, I don't see any conflict with it.
You, you're comfortable with him working and juggling two jobs?
It's not, that's not a work, that's not a job. That's served as a capacity in the board member, board members, it's not a job, to do that in a, in a basis.
It's a job, it makes it...
It's not a duty or basis that you do that, and it's either once a month, once a month that they wait for an hour, two hours, so that's, so it's not a job.
You don't think he's already over a month?
I, I believe that he's able to handle that, that part of the board, that part of the board.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I've moved, entertain a motion to a separate resolution 370 to 392.
Will move.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going abstaining in for the resolution 376.
So noted.
Any other extensions before we do the vote?
No. No.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Regan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
And Council President Escobar is abstaining on 376.
Yes. At this time, before we go into the public portion of the meeting, I just wanted to give a little update, summary of some updates that we have, my concern in terms of the Delikston Avenue intersection, we had done some follow-up. Mr. Lattner, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. Since the last meeting, I know that Mr. Patterson has given the traffic commission some advice that, that there's been a number of public complaints about this location, and has asked that they look into the matter. I believe they have that possibly on their agenda for their first January meeting. He's also had communication with Rutgers and asked them to expedite or accelerate the study that they're involved in, and he's not here tonight, I'm not sure exactly how productive that conversation was. But in the meantime, with the help of the city engineer, we did have a, at least two yellow centerline pedestrian crossing signs put into the roadway close to Elizabeth Avenue, Elizabeth Street, excuse me. And with the help of the PD, the police department, we did move those flashing speed signs to that location. We are looking at the data of accidents at that location, we're trying to come up with some other temporary measures until the time that the, a more permanent solution is engineered and approved, and quite possibly that, that permanent solution could be a lighted crosswalk kind of situation that you've seen on Joyce Kilmer. But I just wanted to at least let you know that we had, and also had a conversation with the county engineer's office, that we put some temporary measures in place that we hope are, are helpful for that location.
Also want to add that after the meeting, I wrote a letter to freehold the polls from the county, and we are going to be meeting with the county engineer, the city staff, and see what other, you know, I suggested we should, I said that I'm not an expert, you know, the pedestrian light, so we're going to start, you know, looking at what can we do immediately, and what can we expect later on, because this is something that is a little bit complicated, like we said at the last meeting, this is a little bit complicated, but we're trying to see what would be the best solutions that we have so far until we have, we are able to complete what the county and it's going to do with this scenario. So I just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
That's great. And we could also just continue to keep it with the New Brunswick Police Department as they keep up their patrols there in that area.
And I know that I have been, I drive there almost every day, in the signs, you know, the flashing, the speed limit signs, and the signs, and pedestrians in the middle of the road. It has helped, at least to draw attention to the drivers, because the drivers are the most responsible of the way they drive, to slow down a little bit, so even though it's not a permanent solution, but I think that for now, this is some things that we will start, and hopefully at the next, within the next few weeks, if we freehold the polls, we could have there a better alternative for that specific intersection. Anybody else, before we go into the public, anyone from the council wishes to address the public at this time? At this time, any member of the public who wishes to address the council?
Governor Aaron O'Sullivan, Somerset. I'd like to raise two issues of serious concern for the council to address. First is systemic problems with the community liaison and internal affairs hearing review process. The last time I spoke before this council, I pointed out that my first two requests for hearing reviews were ignored for nine whole months, and only after publicly complaining did the liaison finally schedule a meeting for us to establish a hearing review. However, the hearing dates were repeatedly and routinely canceled, and after 16 long months of constant delay, the liaison finally confirmed the hearing review with former hearing officer, Mr. Hammond. But as usual, this hearing was also canceled. I again publicly complained, and coincidentally, Mr. Hammond resigned as the hearing officer. Council President Escobar, you graciously apologized to me and admitted there was no excuse for how long the hearing had been delayed, and I appreciate that. I also pointed out to the council that the liaison had even tried to dissuade me from moving forward with my hearing. Now, although Ms. Gaden denied it, I believe the facts support my allegations. She claimed she was only advising me that she believed since I filed a civil complaint that that was the best way for me to get my complaint investigated. However, a civil complaint is for seeking monetary damages for civil rights violations, and internal affairs complaints are for seeking administrative charges, discipline, and criminal charges against the officers for violating my rights. So the two have nothing to do with each other. My civil complaint has nothing to do with seeking administrative or criminal charges, and as a trained attorney, Ms. Gaden is fully aware of that. Also, both civil and administrative complaints can be pursued at the same time. So I didn't have to give up my internal affairs hearing review to pursue my civil complaint. I can do both. And she was well aware of that also. Also, prior to this even happening, and her making that statement that I didn't need the internal affairs hearing review because I filed a civil complaint, prior to that, we had had several meetings where I told her I was preparing to file my civil complaint, and I even showed her a rough draft copy of my civil complaint. Yet she did not tell me at that time, at any of those prior meetings, that she thinks I don't need to pursue the internal affairs hearing review because I'm filing a civil complaint. She proceeded to schedule the hearings, but they just kept getting canceled issues. So the totality of circumstances indicates that she did try to dissuade me from having the hearing, but I insisted on having it, I wouldn't agree to not having it. So ultimately, a new hearing officer was appointed, and my hearing was finally held on October 24, 2013, which is over two months ago. But to add insult to injury, after going through seven months of hell fighting to actually get the hearing, once it was completed on October 24, I have still not received the hearing officer's decision. I haven't been notified of any decision, I haven't received any notification of any status update. I've been kept in the dark deliberately for over the past two months since the hearing's been done. So what good is, I had to fight almost a year and a half to get the hearing, then after I finally get it, now I gotta come fight to get the, the decision. This is nonsense. And far as I'm concerned, this clearly then gives the appearance of some sort of impropriety. As I stated in the beginning, I never trusted this whole process, but you would always thank me, Council President Escobar, because I followed the process, so I cooperated with the process. And after cooperating, I still ain't getting no results. I don't know anything, and nobody will tell me anything. And to add insult to injury, when I make certain requests pursuing my own independent investigation, and I send in common law requests for government records and public information, my rights are constantly violated because they come up with excuses, pretext like, according, pursuant to the Attorney General Guidelines, your request is denied, I can't give you anything from Internal Affairs. So they're always finding ways to try to justify obstructing my investigation and preventing me from gathering evidence that will support my allegations and prove that at least altogether, when you add up the cases I got, about 10 officers are guilty of violating my rights. And they quote the Attorney General Guidelines, but that inspired me to go research, because when anybody says something to me and tells me I can't have something because of this reason, I'm going to go research, and I'm not going to trust what they're telling. And before I even move on to the Attorney General Guidelines, first I move on to, at the hearing I was given by Ms. Gaden, something called the protocol for internal affairs hearing process before an independent hearing officer. It was stamped as an exhibit. Pardon me for not actually having it, I accidentally left it at home, but I'll mail it to you, I'll provide you with it, or she can provide it to you. But it says in there that the hearing will be sound recorded by the community liaison officer. I wasn't notified whether it was sound recorded or not, so I don't know if it was or not. It goes on to say, "Post-hearing, a copy of the sound recording of the hearing will be forwarded to the New Brunswick Police Director, Anthony Caputo." I haven't been notified if that has happened. So it appears to me, since I'm not being told anything, I haven't gotten a decision from the, from the hearing officer, I don't know if this process is being followed, so it appears to me that they're violating their own protocols. To further go on, it states that, it further states, "Instances involving previously filed complaints," and I had two previously filed complaints. It says, "The hearing officer and community liaison officer shall determine from the Internal Affairs Bureau, to the extent permitted under the Attorney General Guidelines and New Jersey state law, whether the matter was previously reviewed by the city's police department." Now, we already know it's previously, previously reviewed, because Lieutenant Carroll claimed to have done a thorough investigation, an objective and impartial investigation, but he exonerated the officers. Then Lieutenant Miller, who I guess is now Captain Miller, also claimed to have participated in that investigation and claimed the officers were exonerated. Then Lieutenant Goldeski claimed that the officers were exonerated. So I have three different letters from three different internal affairs unit officers, all claiming the, the officers in question were exonerated. But it goes on to say that if a matter was previously reviewed by the city's police department, and if so, what action was taken with regard to saying? The action that was taken was, it was covered up, they were exonerated. It says, "This information shall be reviewed by the hearing officer with the complaint." I'm the complaint, the hearing officer hasn't reviewed anything with me. Nobody has said anything to me, not the community liaison officer, not the hearing officer. It goes on to say that "This information shall be reviewed by the hearing officer with complaint to determine what further actions any need be taken." That hasn't been done, they're violating their own protocols, which gives the appearance of impropriety, propriety, a cover-up. Nobody wants to admit that I presented, number one, the hearing only requires that I meet the lesser burden or the lesser standard of the preponderance of evidence. I don't have to prove... I don't have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that the officers did it. I simply have to meet the preponderance of evidence standard, which I did. I provided audio dispatch records. What more proof do you need? The officers claimed that they never called for backup. I played the audio dispatch record for the community liaison officer and the hearing officer, and you hear them requesting backup. Now that, I compared it to the court transcript, the trial transcripts, where they read that, they said they didn't request backup while on the stand under oath. So they committed perjury, aggravated perjury. Lied under oath in order to try to get an innocent man convicted of a criminal charge, false charge. How do, how can the hearing officer not give me a recommendation for them to reopen the investigation? I presented indisputable, I actually met the reasonable doubt standard. How can you argue an audio dispatch record from the New Brunswick Police Department? It's not my record. It's their record. And on there, you hear them calling for backup, and you hear multiple units respond saying, "We're on our way to the Howard Johnson motel." And then you hear the dispatcher say, "Units 3, 2, 6, 9, and 88, all to Howard Johnson." That's about five different units. Yet on the stand, these officers lied, Officer Brent J. Gregus and Officer Daniel Mazan lied and said, uh, uh, no, let me correct that. Officer Brad Burdell and Officer Rodney Chang, in that particular incident dealing with Howard Johnson, uh, uh, lied, claimed, "Oh, no, we never asked for no backup." No, there was, Brad Burdell said, "No, we didn't request backup. There was no, uh, uh, uh..." I said, "Well, didn't another unit show up?" "Oh, yeah, well, one unit showed up, but he just came on his own." Yet, the audio dispatch record proves that you had at least five different units here. I've been trying to get the information of the names and identify the names of those John Doe officers. And Captain Miller refuses to provide me with the information. Yet he's supposed to be the commander of Internal Affairs. How are you going to be the commander of Internal Affairs and you're trying to cover up things? You're refusing, you're obstruct, he's obstructing my investigation and deliberately preventing me from being able to gather evidence that he knows will convict this crooked officer?
I just wanted to point out what we said last time, so we, that Captain Miller is not here, that's, um...
Oh, okay, yes, ma'am. I apologize.
Okay. Just wait, because I really want to direct it to him, I just want you to...
Yes, sir. Apologize to you also, yes.
Not completely.
I like to direct myself directly at who it deserves to go to. But my point is, I presented indisputable proof, and yet I'm going through the same thing. It's now almost two years. I've been struggling and struggling, fighting for justice. And not only fighting for justice for myself, because I already made it clear in letters that I've written to the mayor, I wrote letters to Mayor Cahill telling him these officers were crooked. I sent him copies of my internal affairs complaints when the incident first happened. Got no response, continued to get no response. I sent letters to Middlesex County Prosecutor Bruce Kaplan when he was in office. He ignored me. So you have all of these people conspiring to cover for the officers. The proof is clear. There's, there's nothing anybody can say to me when I'm presenting audio dispatch records. What can you say? How can you argue this? The only thing you can say is, "Well, right, the officers did lie." Or, as most people do, they just try to put up the blue code or blue wall signs. Everybody gets quiet and bums the word. We can't say anything. Because you know the officers are guilty, but nobody cares about the people. And that's what's being demonstrated when government officials are presenting indisputable evidence and still refuse to assist you and give you justice. And they're not even following their own rules and regulations. Their own protocols are being violated. But they love to quote it when they want to deny me evidence. And then you expect people to trust the process? To go, what, is everybody here supposed to have to fight the way I had to fight to get a simple hearing and to try to get a simple recommendation? Because of course, it's deliberately designed to be difficult and create obstacles in order to make sure that people get tired and give up. See, I'm just not that type, though. I'm not built like that. It's not in my nature to quit. I'm like a pit bull. Once I lock on to you, I'm gonna stay locked on until I get what I deserve. So I'm not going nowhere. I come to every city council, meaning if I, I, if you want me to keep showing up here, I'll keep showing up here. And I'm gonna keep showing up with indisputable evidence. I don't understand how the city council, as leaders in their own right, can see what's going on and not in any way, shape, or form attempt to, to help. Because I don't feel like the city council has helped. I, I, the only thing I get is, "Do you listen?" What is that, shoulder to cry on? No, I want some, some results, some action, some actual assistance from city leaders. You see the corruption. You see what's going on. Why don't you assist? Why don't you do anything to help? And as far as I'm concerned, by doing that, that's a miscarriage of justice. And that then makes you part of the conspiracy when you just sit idly by and do nothing when you know in your heart, "I'm telling the truth. You know I've been violated. I proved it, and nobody's doing anything to help me get me justice." That's wrong. And I don't see how people who have any type of, of moral conscience can just sit idly by, idly by and do nothing. I know I can't. When I see people getting harmed, I have to get involved. And that's what I do. I'm out here in this community, helping people all the time. Who've come to me, "Brother Shabazz, my rights are violated. Can you help me?" "Yeah, I got you. Come meet me." I'm always helping people. I come here for some help from the people who are paid to be representatives of the people. You're supposed to represent the people. You're not supposed to represent some corporate municipality. You're supposed to represent the people, actual living, feeling people, living souls who matter. But y'all seem to be more focused on protecting a corporate entity and focused on making sure, oh, well, if we admit the truth, then we're liable for a lawsuit. So in order to make sure we can't get sued and lose any money, we'll all pretend it didn't happen. We'll put our heads in, stick our heads in the sand like an ostrich and go into the Nile pretending it didn't happen. And to further prove that, that, that they're not following the, 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 uh, protocol, it goes on to say, "It further states, 'The police director will ensure a thorough internal affairs,'" thorough, "a thorough internal affairs investigation is conducted, which will include interviewing the complaint." Police director hasn't interviewed me. It's been over two months. I haven't even heard what, whether the hearing officers are going to give me a recommendation or not. So they're not following the protocol. This is what it says they're supposed to do. They gave this to me. Goes on to say that he will, it includes interviewing the complaintant, interviewing his or her witnesses. I had a witness. He's prepared to testify. And it goes on to say, "Any and all evidence." "The New Brunswick Police Director will provide a status update." Nobody provided me a status update or final disposition of the complaint within thirty days, within thirty days, to the community liaison officer, who will thereafter contact the complaintant and advise of the status. Now, it's been over sixty days, and I have not been advised of any status, haven't been contacted. I've been doing all the contacting. I've been calling her, constantly calling her office, "What's going on?" She always claims she doesn't know what's going on. That's the answer I get. After two months, how do you not know what's going on? You're the community liaison officer. How can she not know what's going on? I don't know. The hearing officer hasn't told me anything. This is ridiculous.
I, 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 as I stated before, Mr. Shabazz, and I'm gonna have Ms. Gayden answer. We want to talk to you about, but as I said before, I, I really appreciate it. I know I said it in a long time, but that's the process. And you have followed the process to, to, from what I see, whether, there were some glitches here with the mail or not, but you have followed the process that I had requested. I know I said, "Please follow the process," because after we follow the process, and see, we could determine, you're the first one who have followed the whole process. So there's, so there's no way close to, to the age whether it has been, it's a process that is working or is not working, or there's somebody goes through the whole thing and, and see. I am concerned by some of the things that you have mentioned. That's why I'm gonna ask Ms. Gayden to, to answer some of the questions that I have in terms of especially, you know, if there was a protocol, if it was followed. According to the information that you provided, I have not seen it. I'm just trusting you, the protocol that it was given to you. Obviously, there are some things that, if that was the protocol, that did not concur with what the protocol says. If, but I don't know what circumstances are there. But regardless, Ms. Gayden, it's been two months since he had his hearing. We've been waiting for this hearing, was to find, you know, see what is the final solution, whether I'm going to say one way or another. I just want to see that the process is working, if it's working or not.
What, what is, what is the question?
What is, he has, he went to, he's leaving on October 23rd. Twenty-fourth, twenty, sorry, I don't have my glasses on. The 24th. He still has no receiving response.
Right. Mr. Shabazz talked about a couple of things. He talked about, talked about it being sound recorded. Mr. Shabazz and I agreed. He called and he asked about whether or not you could bring a videographer. He said, "Yes, bring your videographer." And Mr. McDougal was there to do the video. And we also had a court reporter. With a videographer and a court reporter, there was no need to have it sound recorded. In fact, the hearing officer asked Mr. Shabazz to provide us with a copy of the video. Mr. Cradwell was also there, in what capacity, I'm not sure, but he was also there. I'm sorry? So we, as far as being sound recorded, there was no need to have it sound recorded when we had all of those things in place. The hearing was October 24th. I have not received the hearing officer's final report. We have discussed it. There are some things that he asked me for. There are some things that I need clarification from the police regarding some things that, that Mr. Shabazz testified about. And these things take time. I would, I would, I would think that we would be allowed an opportunity to take our time to make sure we have a thorough investigation rather than giving a report of things that are inconclusive. And that's what we're doing.
And I, and I agree with you in that instance, but I agree also that the person should know. Did you notify him that this is taking place?
He called me.
They should be, they should know. But, and I, and I hear you, Ms. Gayden, you know, but I'm talking about, you know, and I know that he called you, but you know that it's something that has happened between the phone calls, and there's always a discrepancy, or I said, "I know, I didn't say that," in writing. Because in writing, there's no way to dispirer, is what, you know, it's in writing, you signed for it, you know, you got that response, so there's no way of, of dispiring that.
I don't think, we have just heard that he did call me. I don't think there's...
No, but he said that he has not received any information regarding, regarding the final decision.
Please, ma'am, I object to give some clarity to what's being said. I called her about three weeks ago. She told me she didn't know. The hearing officer hadn't given her a decision. That's the only answer she gave to me. She said that she should have an answer by Friday. I called her, I believe it was Monday, three Mondays ago, close to around the beginning of December. So I waited till Friday. She said she would call me on Friday to let me know because she should probably have the decision by then. Either way, she was supposed to call me. Friday came, I didn't get a call. That didn't surprise me. I, I've always been told I'm going to get called. Let, let me just finish this. This is important. So I waited till Monday and called again the next week. This time, I spoke to her secretary, Melissa. Her secretary explains to me, "Oh, Ms. Gayden is out sick." She's been out sick since, conveniently, since Friday, the day she was supposed to call. Okay, so she's been out sick from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, now it's Monday, and she's still not in the office. She's sick. All right, cool. She says, um, I said, "Well, she's supposed to give me a status update on Friday." She said, "I'm aware of that. I'll email her and get you a status update." I called her back Wednesday. I called her office back, speak to the secretary, Melissa again. She tells me, "She's still out sick. She has a swollen throat. She's very sick." I said, "Okay, but you said you would email her and get a status update, so you should still have some information for her." She, "Oh, I did email her. She told me to tell you that when she gets back in the office, she'll contact you." This is all I'm being told. And then, I don't know when she came back in the office, but I can tell you, until this day, I've never heard anything from her. So let's be clear. She hasn't told me anything.
Ms., I, I would like to...
Please, ma'am, I didn't contact him, and I shouldn't.
I just want to see if, because I know this is, if this has a lot of questions that I have, that I'm not thinking right now. I really want to see the possibility. I will be away for a few days, for two weeks, but when I come back, I, I'm, I want to meet with Ms. Gayden. I want to meet with you and see where is this? Because I want to know that this process is working, what is the, and, and there's something... Well, and, and let's see what are the glitches and what's the protocol. So if you would allow me, I would really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. I, I have respect for you because to me, you're the only one to be, so far at this point, who's ever demonstrated any real concern for what I'm wanting.
Everybody has concerns. I'm just, I'm just a spokesperson here, but, but I... Let's, if you allow me that, let's just finish this, and let's, let's meet, and I will... You know that if you could stay for a little bit, and I could talk to Ms. Gayden. I see one time we do, as soon as I start the term. I'll be away, like I said, for two weeks, but I, when I get back, I'll just try to resolve this, the process, I mean, for... Because I think it's time.
Yes, ma'am. I, okay, then I want to, I still have one more serious concern I want to address. And it deals with the systemic problems of the internal affairs unit. From the beginning, they've been covering this up. It doesn't matter that Sergeant Richard Rowe was indicted and resigned in disgrace, and we finally got him out of there. And you're, and everybody's now trying to claim that internal affairs has been cleaned up once they got rid of Sergeant Richard Rowe. It hasn't been cleaned up. Lieutenant Carroll is just as corrupt as Richard Rowe, and Captain Miller is just as corrupt as Richard Rowe. And they're all covering up for these officers. When Ms. Gayden says they're trying to do a thorough investigation, that's what the Attorney General Guidelines and Internal Affairs Policy and Procedures require, and that will be done from the beginning. So if a thorough and objective and impartial investigation was done from the beginning by Lieutenant Carroll and Captain Miller, what are we going through now? I presented the same evidence at that hearing that I presented to Lieutenant Carroll and Captain Miller. So you can't see something now that requires this deep, thorough, long investigation where the very complaintant can't even get any information. Everything's top secret now. I can't even know what's going on. For, because a thorough investigation is what, finally being done? What was done in the beginning? I provided audio, that audio dispatch record I provided to Captain Miller over a year and a half ago. That's indisputable evidence. And when you talk about a thorough investigation, we don't want it to not be thorough. What do you mean? This is open and shut. If you look at a court transcript, a trial transcript where officer testifies under oath, I never requested for backup, and no backup ever came except for one unit who just happened to show up because we just look out for each other. And then you listen to the audio dispatch record produced by the New Brunswick Police Department, and you hear the officer on there saying, "Yeah, I need backup at Howard Johnson." That's, that's it. How can I not get a recommendation? That's all evidence right there in your face. You can't get around it. And then you listen to it, and you hear the dispatcher saying, "Yeah, uh, units, uh, 3, 9, 2, 8, and 88," whatever he said, "to Howard, all to Howard Johnson." And then at the end of the video, of the audio, the audio lasts thirty-two minutes and some seconds. Officer Brad Burdell claimed he only had me there for five minutes. Then why is the audio dispatch record thirty-two minutes? And at the end of it, you hear him say, "Thanks for all the backup." Now, you ain't request no backup, and they didn't send no backup. Why the hell are you thanking them for all the backup? I played this for them. So I don't see how anybody can sit there and, with a straight face, and say, "We want to do a thorough investigation, and we want to make sure..." What are you talking about? I proved my case beyond a reasonable doubt, beyond a shadow of a doubt. So the only thing you can be doing is trying to cover up. Stall tactics to help what, the officers figure out a way to weasel around my evidence? Them officers, those officers are guilty as sin. Officer Brad Burdell, we already know, he resigned in disgrace anyway. He was found guilty of, of, of three departmental violations after fatally shooting Brother Barry Deluge. He should have been indicted for murder. Now, now, you're going to take this crooked joker who has been, who had to resign in disgrace, and you are, now, I, I proved to you, I put the audio evidence and proved to you, he's a bold-faced liar. He committed a crime, aggravated perjury, to get me convicted of a crime that I didn't commit. And, and, and you think I shouldn't be upset? Or I, I'm supposed to still be patient after almost two years? I've been patient. How much longer I got to be patient? Nobody tells you, "Oh, first I get an apology because it takes almost a year and a half to get the hearing." Now I get the hearing, and it's taking months and months for me to get a decision or get any information on here. And I presented evidence that you can't dispute, so there's nothing else to discuss. They're guilty. They should be found guilty. I should have been, the hearing officer to say, you know what? You've proven your case. You've met the, uh, uh, preponderance of evidence standard, and I'm giving a recommendation. Now we're going to follow the protocols, and we're going to make sure we give this sound recording. Now, Ms. Gayden is correct. I did bring my associate, Mr. Timothy McDougal, who brought his video camera. But that still doesn't change the protocol she's supposed to follow. Her protocol says that a sound recording will be made by the community liaison officer. So what we did is completely independent of what's... So what we did is completely independent of what she's supposed to do, she's supposed to follow that protocol. It says that the sound recording will then be forwarded to the police director. She's supposed to make her own sound recording to give to the police director. Has nothing to do with whatever me and Mr. McDougal are recording. So I'm just pointing out that they're not following their protocol. She hasn't contacted you. Now, oh, well, he's right, what do you mean I'm right? Why don't you do what you're supposed to do? I don't wanna hear that I'm right, I want you to do the right thing. That's where we at with this. Stop telling me I'm right, and do the right thing.
I'm against Mr. Shabazz. Um, like I said, I, I'm, I'm really interested in the process, what is going on, regardless of the content, who sent this, and it's just a process that it has, if it has been followed up. And I really, again, I really appreciate you, uh, patient, you kindly, you know, kindness. And like I said, give me that opportunity, because I don't know, I just wanna make sure that what is going on with this process, that if the process is not working, then we have to change it, then we have to, somebody has to go through the whole thing. And if it works, oh, why did it work? And if it didn't, why it didn't work? So, in the meantime, that doesn't mean that she's, you know, that she has to follow your case. I'm just giving you, you know, asking you, for those, when I return in two weeks, so we could sit down and see why was wrong with the process and what was wrong with the process.
Yes, ma'am, I have no problem with that, but I, I want you to be clear on, I want you to be clear on how Internal Affairs are also violating their own Attorney General Guideline. They love to quote it when they wanna deny me evidence that I need to prove my case. But they don't follow the Attorney General Guidelines. Let's, let's go through some of the Attorney General Guidelines.
That's why I wanna see all that information, so I can look at it and see.
I have it, I have the Attorney, this is Internal Affairs, Internal Affairs Policies and Procedures, you can get it offline.
But I understand, but this is, this is not the time to sit down and see what it is, and, and we, we did what we were supposed to do. Let's move forward, if we didn't, let's see what, what we went from there.
I, I, I understand that, and there's just a few things I still want you to hear. I've been waiting for a long time, I haven't got any justice, I wanna at least be heard at. So, the, what I wanna further point out about Internal Affairs is, it took them almost a year before they even contacted me to schedule an interview. I filed my complaints in two thousand and ten. One on May fourth, two thousand and ten, against, uh, 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 Officer Brant Jay Greigus and Officer Daniel Maison. And then, two months later, my rights got violated again by Officer Brad Riddell and Rodney Chain. I filed my complaints in May and July. They didn't get back to me until two thousand and eleven, I believe, March of two thousand and eleven. And the only reason that Lieutenant Carroll finally got back to me in March of two thousand and eleven is because I was in the process of going through a trial in New Brunswick Municipal Court, based on these trumped-up charges where Officer Greigus lied and made a false arrest, him and Maison. So now I'm going to trial, and while going to trial, I requested, I made a request for discovery. And in that request for discovery, I requested Internal Affairs summary reports. Now, because no Internal Affairs summary reports have been done, because Internal Affairs do not conduct proper investigations, they try to sweep things under the rug. So because there was no Internal Affairs summary report, now, all of a sudden, it's obvious to me, the prosecutor let him know, this guy's doing a request for discovery, he's asking for an Internal Affairs summary report, do you got it? And of course, Lieutenant Carroll, no, oh, it's not here, oh, we didn't close out this investigation properly. So now, we gotta try to do a follow-up. So he sends me a letter, finally, almost a year later, talking about, oh, I'm trying to set up an interview with you. A year later, and only because of what I was doing in court. So finally, we have the interview. I go in, I give, I tell him exactly what happened, I tell him how these officers asked for my license registration and insurance at McDonald's on Route twenty-seven, I provided them with my license registration and insurance, so that they could issue, issue me the trumped-up tickets that they wanted to issue. They claimed, when they came back from their car, their patrol cruiser, that I had rolled my window all the way up and refused to roll it down to take back my own credentials and a ticket, so I could go free. Now, the Internal Affairs Policy and Procedure and Attorney General Guidelines state that an Internal Affairs investigator is supposed to investigate all claims to their logical conclusions. Emphasis on the word logic, logical conclusions. Now, how is it logical, this is what they testified to, this is on the court, the trial transcripts, that when they came back to my window to give me back my license registration insurance and the tickets, I had rolled my window all the way up and refused to roll it down to take back my own credentials, so that I could go? Yet, I said, well then, how were you able to arrest me? Oh, we asked you to open the door, and you complied, got out and arrested you. It is not logical to conclude that I won't roll my window down, so I can take back my own property and leave. But I am willing, oh, I'm not gonna roll my window down, but I will open the door and get out, and yeah, sir, you've been arrested. Where's the logic in that? So if Internal Affairs are following the rules like they're supposed to, that's not a logical conclusion. The only logical conclusion you, you have to conclude is that my story is more plausible. My story needs the preponderance of evidence, because it is what is more likely to have happened than not. These officers are telling ridiculous Disney World stories, this don't make no sense.
And Mr. Shabazz, you gave all of this information to the hearing officer, I'm assuming?
Yes, ye- yes, and this is what I'm saying, I knew my case.
No, no, but he heard all this information you already provided to the hearing officer, we're just waiting on the response, and he has not, nobody has done, you know, the, the response to that, you, you're hearing.
Right, but I, I just want you to be aware of a few more things. I request, if you remember, I came here and I asked about, do New Brunswick Police Cruisers have GPS data? Captain Miller said, in my request, when I sent it to him in writing, he would say, oh, they don't have GPS, or GPS records are not available. So he, he, he's very evasive, GP, GPS records are not available. We, the New Brunswick Police Department does not retain GPS data, therefore, the records are not available. I believe that's exactly what he said. Now, when I come here, because I don't trust what Captain Miller's saying, he already showed me, he covered it for the officers. So I, I don't trust nothing Captain Miller says. So when I come here and say to, before the city council, uh, does, uh, New Brunswick Police Cruisers have GPS? And you, uh, uh, council president, say, well, I don't know, Captain Miller, could you answer that? He's standing up, uh, well, we do have GPS, but it's in real time. Now, he didn't say that in, when he answered my common law request for government protection. But now, he's on the spot, so, oh, we do have it, but it's in real time. So of course, I asked, well, what's that? And, oh, well, we have GPS, we are able to locate them, but we don't, it doesn't store records. So then, if you recall, and you may not, because I know you have a lot of council meetings, but I'm gonna refresh your memory. I then started asking about, uh, two other, uh, officers that had retired. So you then stated to me, or I, I believe it was, uh, uh, Mr. Hammond, stated that they, they retired. The people I asked about had retired, uh, about ten years ago. Um, so when I was told that they retired, I said, okay. Well, I found an article on the internet while doing my research, um, that stated that the city of New Brunswick has signed a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar contract with New World Systems for updating all of its computer systems in the police cruisers and giving them all updated technology, which included GPS and ABL. Once I said that, you refer back to, I know he's not here, but you refer back to Captain Miller, who was standing back there. And he said, well, I, I, I'm not really sure about whether, whether we have that contract, um, or that technology. Mr. Shabazz is throwing around a lot of letters, GPS, ABL, I, I don't. Now, number one, I would argue that I believe he was being disingenuous. Because for one, he's the captain of the police. To be the captain of the police force and not know the law enforcement technology that's utilized in all of your police cruisers either means you're completely incompetent, or he's just a liar. He's pretending not to know what technology they have, or he's an idiot. How can you be the captain of the force and not know what law enforcement technology you're utilizing in your automobiles? I'm using a lot of letters, these, these letters, these terms are common law enforcement terms. ABL, Automatic Vehicle Located, it tracks where the vehicle is. He's a law enforcement officer, supposed to be a head law enforcement officer, how does he not know that? So I don't believe he didn't know it. I don't believe he's that incompetent, I believe he's that deceptive, that shrewd, that dishonest. So after going through all that, I went home and immediately typed up another common law request. You're gonna give me this information, now I want all information regarding contracts between the city of New Brunswick and New World, uh, Systems, and what type of technology they have. Since he pretended not to know, he sends me, I get a this. I, I asked for information from, for the contracts for the last five years. I review it, and it's saying it has all of the technology I just stated. Yet he continues to illegally deny my request when I ask for the GPS, ABL records that will prove that you had all of those units show up at Howard Johnson to snatch me out of my car, illegally search me, harass me, use excessive force on me, and violate my rights. Officer Brad Riddell cannot be trusted, that's why you got rid of him. But he's still gotta pay for what he did, and I'm not letting it go. And Officer Greigus and Officer Maison, they crooked, and they gotta pay for what they did. Lied on me, arrested me, they prevented me from being able to get jobs. I used to be a unit supervisor, unit supervisor for one of the top juvenile justice programs in the state. Now, because I went through all of that, at the time I had people interested, I was sending around my resume. Now I'm having problems. And while nobody tells me to my face what it is, I know what it is. Because for ten years straight, I had a sterling career. Now all of a sudden, I'm having problems? And it only started after I was falsely arrested? Somebody, justice needs to be done, and I'm gonna keep pursuing it by any means necessary. I'm never gonna stop, because I'm right, the truth is on my side. So, I'm proving, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say, and then I'm gonna let somebody else speak, but, but this is more indisputable evidence. I also requested, besides me now getting the information about New World Systems, so I know Captain Miller, or it appears that Captain Miller has been lying to me all of this time, I also said, well, you know what? You wanna play games? I requested the roll call duty sheets. And he did finally send that, begrudgingly. And on the roll call duty sheets, I said, I'll just match this up with the numbers of units that the dispatchers call out on the audio dispatch record. So I start to try to match it up, and you know what I realized? In the section on this New Brunswick Police Department Roll Call Report, Friday, July ninth, two thousand and ten, uh, in the section where it says car and bike, and it identifies the number of units, it's written in my hand, so it's not put in my computer. So somebody could write in what they wanna write in. And I noticed, none of the numbers, not of, the, the unit that Riddell was in, the unit that Chain was in, didn't match up with the unit that was called out on the audio dispatch record. So that means somebody has tampered with this government document and put in false information. More corruption from Internal Affairs and the New Brunswick Police Department. Because they knew how I was gonna utilize this record to prove my case, so they put in false information. Now it's not even matching up with what's being said on, on the audio dispatch record. Now, I know the audio dispatch record didn't make up the, the number of the unit, so that means somebody's writing in false numbers of units here. Got the proof to that? And when we sit down, I'd be glad to show you all of that. So as you look at that, you see there's clear corruption, people are tampering with government records. Why? Because obviously, and when I first got arrested, when Officer Greigus first arrested me, him and Maison, Greigus came right out his face, and it's in my two thousand and ten Internal Affairs complaint that he said to me, yeah, you know what, when I told him I knew my rights, he already, I guess, presumed that I was gonna follow government. So he said, yeah, I ain't seen my boys from Internal Affairs in a while anymore. He said it with such confidence, and I see why. They are his boys, and they've been doing everything to cover up for him for the past, what is it, almost forty years now? From two thousand and ten, it's going into two thousand and fourteen, they've done everything to cover up for him. So I don't understand what more evidence I gotta present, especially when I only gotta meet the preponderance standard. I'm in, I'm, I went far above that standard. So at this point, all I see is more people conspiring against me. I don't see anybody doing their job, other than yourself. You're the only one that I'll give the credit. Other than you, I don't see anybody, I've written letters to the mayor, he never responded, never helped me. Now, he's supposed to be the mayor of the city, he's supposed to be the head of the city. How do you get letters from people telling you about police corruption, and you don't even respond? You don't even have the decency to respond? Are you too big, are you too important to respond? Are you that arrogant, that cocky? And I wrote him about three letters, all motorized, I believe. So why, why doesn't he, and he's never at none of these meetings, why isn't he? You got all these complaints going on, how come he don't come to the meetings? People, he is supposed to be the head of the city, why does he, why does he leave you to have to deal with all the stress?
Well, he, he doesn't have to be following the city's, that's your career.
He should, is my point. It's morally right, as the leader, right, he's supposed to be the leader of the city, isn't the mayor supposed to be the leader? So as the leader, how do you lead from behind? You lead from in front, and you lead by example, that's what real leaders do, that's what I do. I'm a real community leader, I'm leading by example. You can't sit and hide in your office and let your, and let your uncles do your dirty work, that's not right.
I, I certainly not, because I have keys behind, you know, he's gonna hide it for the day.
Well, how can you get a response on none of my letters? He's avoiding you.
That's, that's something that, that, I don't know why they did it, but I'm just, you know, telling you from, from my experience, but I, um, but again, thank you for allowing me to do this one more here, and, um, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, uh, once again, I just wanna say that for the second meeting in a row, I am so.
Name and address?
Charles Cradaville, sixth ward, New Brunswick, I'm so proud of the people who came out tonight. And, uh, some of them were very brave to tell stories of intimidation and, uh, not, not having a fair shake, and, and they're going up against big forces, so, uh, kudos to them for standing up for their rights and for the rights of their neighbors and citizens here. Um, I, I'll start with an easy one, I know that the city hired four new police officers, I asked about it at the last meeting. Can anyone tell me the names of the officers?
So not, you do not have the names, and don't you say that you, you, you know, to follow them?
I'm sorry, I don't.
I'll, I'll give them the names after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Also regarding the police, uh, I wanted to ask, what happens, uh, when the police director is unable to fulfill their duties or, or, uh, for some reason has to step aside from the role? Who is in charge of the department?
Captain Miller.
It's a, it's discretion, um, all three of the captains have had that honor at one point.
And, and is it true that there was such a situation, uh, I guess shortly before Christmas, where the, the police director was unable to, to be in, in the role?
I am not aware of that, you have that, Mr. Cladville?
Uh, no, possibly out of town on vacation or something, but I, I'm not familiar with the incident or something.
Okay, um, I, I wanted to know, uh, I guess, why doesn't he come to these meetings? Because that would just make things a lot easier.
The police director always, we have a representative from the police director who's here, who are, Captain Miller is the one here, and that's why it has been done. And I'm afraid that sometimes when the police director is here, something is here, and you tell it to Joseph Miller, just for the police director, uh, all night, instead of a meeting where the community, not just one or two, but the whole community is able to, um, to talk, we are able to do our jobs. So there's no need for him to be here when he has a representative here. And I know that if there's any for you to get in touch with him, you know how to get in touch with him.
Yeah, to go to the parking lot of your board meeting to find him, and that's, that's, that's why I said that's a conflict. He doesn't have enough time to come to these meetings where most of the department heads come, but he has time to, to take on this other position, and it doesn't, doesn't.
If he doesn't meet with you, I don't know why, it's up to, you know, I don't think that that's, um, you should ask him why he doesn't wanna meet with him or say, but, um, I don't think it's a first statement to say a little that he doesn't do it with anybody else. It's your reality, that doesn't mean that it's anybody else's reality.
Well, this is reality here, and he should come to these meetings, is all I'm saying, but, but I'll, I'll move on. Uh, I wanted to ask, because there's been changes made to the, uh, Title Thirty-nine authority, the authority that Rutgers Police have in New Brunswick. Has the area that they're supposed to be, uh, having that authority changed in, in the past month, let's say?
Mr. Cradaville, you wrote something about it, so you know, kind of, because you gave so inaccurate information in that piece.
Please correct the record.
But, uh, I'm not gonna get into it, because I'm not the police department, I think that you should talk to the director. But it says, the, the changes that are, Captain Momenta, I don't know if you saw what all the changes, but, uh, mainly the changes that have been part of that is something that Rutgers and New Brunswick has been working together. I mean, I just wanna give you something very brief, because. together, I mean, I just wanna give you something very brief, because, um, all the details you should get from him or from the Rutgers Police. Uh, but, uh, you know that Rutgers was, um, acquiring U N D N J, it's bigger now, so there's always a, a, they have a bigger area to cover, New Brunswick has another area to cover, but they all still remain in full force, um, a authority to do what they need to do. Uh, Rutgers was no stripped down of any powers, is my understanding. It's just that the area that they cover is mainly the campuses because of the murder is bigger. And you, and the, you and the D N J police, so then they ask, for if the city, they still patrol in the city, there's still some areas that they do, and if the city needs them, they won't be there, so, for, um, the police director was never, is my understanding, was never as you, um, eh, reported eh, in, in your article that you wrote, eh, he was never at the police department, at Rutgers Police Department, eh, eh, so this is something that they were every so often, um, every year, I think that they really had agreement. Eh, so for any other information that you found that is accurate, uh, I, I, I would suggest that you get it from Rutgers Police or the police department, New Brunswick to, to, to give you that information. The source that you quoted, since you don't give name, I don't, when people don't, doesn't give name, I really don't take the, you know, if the information is that face value, because you should give your name all the time. If you're that, you are that concerned and it's something that really, you should be giving your name. Uh, but again, eh, that's something that is particular to some of the things that you, you guys, you know, the articles that you, that you people post, um, usually has a source, one of the name, you know, the, but, but again, if you got, uh, that's, that's what I'm saying about the, the, there is some, I think it's just, it's not changes, it's just the area and some of the responsibilities, that's it.
Sounds like there's some changes, but, but I, I will, for the record, say that immediately the first person I reached out to was Police Director Tony Caputo, I sent him an email, I asked a straightforward question, a one sentence question, and that was more than a week ago and I've gotten no response. So that's why I'm here, I'm bringing the question to you and it's, it stinks that you're in that position, but seems like there's a real problem.
I don't think there's a problem, I think there's, there is information, inaccurate information, but I will give you more details on it, you know, uh, eh, but there is, you know, the information, it was, it was inaccurate.
Okay, well, I'm, uh, looking forward to having two council meetings in one week, so I'll get these answers very quickly.
You won't see me at the next one, but I will try to get answers.
Even better. Now, I, uh, I, 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 I hope you have a good vacation. I wanna also ask about, um, the situation with the, the Chief Housing Inspector, so it was brought up during the, uh, the ordinances.
I am not making
Who is currently filling that role now that?
It was, it was in the press release, it say, um, who's, who's in the position at this point, I think.
We've asked a senior housing inspector by the name Sherri Miller to serve in an acting chief capacity.
And I have to ask you, that a temporary thing or potentially she would be?
At this time, it's just temporary, eh, eh, temporary.
Hard for me to predict the future, but it's, it's a temporary, um, solution, um, we'll see if it turns into something more permanent.
Okay. Um, and, uh, I gotta get back to this, uh, very important issue of the water quality and I know at the last meeting, the, the city admitted that there was a fine in 2008 and the business administrator who was in charge of the utility at that time said he wanted more time to do research and to get the, the facts about that. And, and I, I wanna know now, what was the reason that the city was fined and who was responsible for the, uh, errors in the water testing?
I've, I've not had a chance to look at those files since the last meeting. I did in public here state to Mr. Cradaville, we're all here to hear that, I do intend to provide him with the enforcement history out of the water utility, I committed to that, uh, again in writing to, to him today by email, I did not have a chance to look into the matter further since the last meeting.
Thank you.
Um, well, I, I mean, I have to be honest, for the person who was in charge of the utility at the time to not know who was responsible, not be able to say why the fine was levied, uh, is very concerning, because this was years ago, uh, that should be, that would, that would stick in my memory if I was running with it.
I don't know, but I guess I don't know what I, you know, in 2008.
I don't know, it's the water quality, this is a big deal, you know, and the D P doesn't just fine people for no reason, in fact, they give you a lot of time to get into compliance.
I think that we have to see what was the reason, that's what we're trying to figure out, what was the reason and?
So five years later, we're gonna find out the reason, I can't wait.
Okay.
I wanna ask, was, when that error happened and there was an error in testing and the type of testing was about, uh, um, the, the level of disinfection that the water had had, uh, did anybody look into whether anyone got sick or when did anybody, any?
You talking 2008?
Yeah, when the, when the city failed to meet the federal water testing requirements.
If, if that's something that we don't have the, uh, I, but I don't know how to answer, because it's 2008 and at that time, if you're still looking for the information that, that we have, but I'm pretty sure if it was something that it was like maybe usually the D P also, they would put an advisory, so if there wasn't an advisory, obviously it wasn't.
I, I would remember if, if, uh, people got sick or if we looked into it or not.
And I also, I, I had looked into some others, when there were some claims here that the, the hospital had a sign, and I, I spoke, um, to people at the hospital, they said that they had never done that unless there is, um, there was construction going on and maybe that's why they put it, but nothing related to, nobody has, you know, related to the water quality of New Brunswick, there's the oil advisory, we're doing sadly, they, they did have some signs, but other than that, the hospital, I'm just adding this just to know, because it was something that you might have brought up, um, before. In 2008, I really, do you recall in 2008?
I, I don't, that's why I, I asked for some more time to look at the file and be specific about what the violation was and be specific about what our response was and be specific about what was expected of us, I, I have not had a chance to do.
So at this time, Mr. Cradaville, we cannot answer any of your questions related to this incident.
Very unfortunate, um, now, at the last meeting, the business administrator was critical of my, what he called daily questions and weekly over, over requests and said there's fifty-eight thousand other people in the city who have their own questions. And I, I'm here to tell you that I represent some of them, that, that there's people who want these answers, that water quality is not something, uh, that, uh, that, this is, this is something of importance to the entire community and the fact that I have to ask questions three or four times to get a straight answer and then weeks after the D P has, has suspended the person in charge of the water treatment plant, uh, that we still don't have answers about something that was five years ago, a documented fine and, and, you know, the, the people who were in charge then are in this room now and they don't have the answers. That's very concerning to me and these fifty-eight thousand other people, probably some of them care about it too, so I would hope that you would expedite these answers about this very, uh, serious issue and I just wanna close by talking a little bit about, uh, this, uh, idea of bad apples. Um, you know, it's been expressed repeatedly by the city that Edward O'Rourke was a bad apple, he was the one bad apple in the water department and that is why the, uh, records were falsified.
The actions of water.
We were supposed to be boiling water, uh, and we weren't told, people were drinking water that could have been hurting them, uh, and, I mean, when you look at the pattern, these aren't, these aren't low level employees, these, these are people who were put in charge. He was in charge of the water plant, he was a licensed operator for the water plant for twenty-five years. Richard Rowe was in charge of the Internal Affairs Department, one of the most important positions within the police department. He was not an underling, he was in charge of it. Uh, Mike Mahoney was not an underling, he was in charge of the housing inspectors, so I, I just have to say, you know, this is to say nothing of the corruption at the parking authority or within the Board of Education, uh, what is the city doing about what appears to be a very systemic problem with people being put in charge and it being found out decades later that they were not doing their jobs properly or that they were actually abusing their power and to the detriment of citizens? What's being done about that, about the systemic corruption that is clear in New Brunswick?
Well, I just wanna tell you that I know the systemic corruption, I'm talking about, but at least I know that the city was the one who reported, Frank Rashan was the one employee, the charge director of the water department, he was the one who reported about the, eh, eh, the actions that there was some, eh, the decisions in the, he was the one who did it. The one with Richard Rowe was the police department who did the reporting that there was something wrong there. The one with the housing inspector, it was the police department, the state police working for a while and they worked on, so the, it's, it's, it's not that the city's not doing anything, I, I, we are, you know, the city's identifying those that they, obviously that are, when they find out that there's something that is not right and they're doing something about it. There are the ones, the city are the ones who put it out there, we were, you know, we started the investigation. So I'm hoping that the same things happen, if there's orders, that, that we continue, you know, what can I say, it's the, it's the end of the year and, and people that are responsible for, I take very seriously, you know, the, the positions, they have to be accountable for their job, but they do. And, but there's a law that also says, and we live in a democracy, that says that you are innocent until you're guilty, there's a process, there's a process, right, that we need to follow, so that's what we're doing. And if there's orders that are, that doesn't reflect, because one or two, the actions of one, two or three people in different departments, so it doesn't, to me, doesn't, um, doesn't reflect the quality of the people that work for the city, because there is a lot of good working hard people that are, eh, working for the city, who has been here for you, doing their job, day in and day out, very competent, doing their job. And it's not fair to say that will happen just because one, two or three are not doing what they are supposed to be doing.
I, I don't disagree, there's a lot of great city employees that do their jobs, it's just very hard when bad apples are put in charge and left in charge for a long time.
But if you don't know that, that, you know, I might give you a job and you might end up like five or six or seven years later and do something that you were also, for whatever reason, you decided, did I think that you were a bad apple when I gave you that, that job and then all of a sudden you decide to do something that is incorrect?
That's why there's oversight and, and
Well, there's oversight, I go oversight, asking what is in place.
Part of the oversight is this meeting and these people who come here, Mr. Shabazz, uh, spoke very articulately and very in detail, he spoke in great detail about the problems at Internal Affairs. Mr. Mahoney, it's not the first time his name's been brought up tonight, he, he's, he's been, uh, people have come here and accused him of exactly what they accused him of tonight, years ago, before you were even on the council, people were coming here and saying, his, it, you know, him and his department are abusing their offices and they're kicking people out of their homes and his own coworkers were, were complaining about him and asking for help from the administration and the administration turned a death fear on them and, and ultimately, I was, I was in the room on October 24th when I got to witness the sham that is the mayor's internal affairs process. Uh, you know, Richard Rowe was, was clearly not doing his job properly and the mayor came along and said, well, don't worry, we've got a new system and only one person's been able to make it through the system and he hasn't quite made it through the end. Two years later, I was in the room and I witnessed what was, uh, you know, the community liaison officer who's advertised as a liaison for the community, yet she was permitted to cross examine him. He couldn't, he couldn't cause, he couldn't call the cops as witnesses, he couldn't cross examine the, the accusers, but the judge even said, yeah, now you can cross examine and it was, it's, it's not, it's not a liaison relationship, it's an adversarial relationship and people came here and told you that there was a huge conflict of interest with appointing this gave me to that position, uh, to begin with, and so it's not like these things aren't being said, it's not like we just found out that, uh, you know, Mike Mahoney might, might not be doing his job right, this has been brought up before time and again and it's only when outside agencies like the state police choose to involve themselves that anything is ever done about it, so I, I'm very concerned about what appears to be systemic corruption, I hope you will rise to the occasion in 2014 and be more vigilant, listen to the people who come here and fight for them. Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm gonna make my remarks briefly, finish on my hand, I miss the word. Um, I just wanted to get another, just cha-chance to find out if, um, if anyone, uh, particularly, um, Mr. Milligan or, um, Mr. Marketa knows anything about the, the incident with the police director Caputo, uh, right before Christmas? Just like that, hear from, I'd like to hear from them.
I, I think that, um, Captain Molyga already said that we didn't know to answer that question before.
What about Mr. Marketa?
Mr. Marketa is the police information officer, I don't think he will have that answer, he was for the, he's the police
He doesn't have one? What, what do you refer?
Prior research.
I, I, I've heard
What is he referring to?
They heard that there was an incident, eh, where police director Caputo were not able to fulfill his duties as police director.
That was not here. Is that true?
Supposedly when that happened, Mr. Caputo called me and he was fined.
Okay.
He was out Christmas shopping.
Ah.
So there's, where rumors start, I don't know.
So what was the incident?
I have no idea. Somebody said he was incapacitated, he called me on the phone, he was out shopping.
Okay, so he's not incapacitated, he's high?
Okay, and so he didn't, he didn't leave his post as the
Right here.
As a police, sorry, he didn't leave his post as the police director.
He hasn't, he didn't leave his post?
Okay. Um, yeah, and then the last point, I guess I just wanted to make was, um, I, I think that there's, this, I want to make some other point about bad apples, because, um, there's, there's this talk of bad apples and things like that, but I, I, I agree with Charlie Cradaville, but there's a systemic problem in the city of New Brunswick, there, the, the roots of corruption in New Brunswick go back, from what I understand, at least in the thirties, you know, and probably before then, um, you know, it's not, uh, it's, what, what basically we have here is, is a monopoly kind of situation, um, if, you know, I don't, for example, buy anything from Walmart because, you know, there are huge monopoly, twenty-five percent of the food sold in America comes from Walmart. Um, I, I think that we have a monopoly of power here in New Brunswick called the, called the political machine, basically, and I think that bad apples aren't the big problem actually with, with it per se, rather, rather that, um, the machine has no mechanism for removing bad apples, because in this kind of system, instead of it working, uh, based on people doing, doing a job because they're the most qualified, um, what happens in this system is that it's a loyalty system and that what matters most is loyalty to the, is loyalty to the, to the leader and loyalty to the machine. Um, so that's why so many of the people up here have familial connections, uh, you know, to each other and to, and to, and to the mayor, um, and things like that and to other people who work in, within the city, you know, because it's, it really comes down to that, to that trust. Um, and, and it was interesting, noteworthy, that at this meeting, you guys held a, an ordinance, um, but weren't quite sure how to, what the process was for doing it, because it is so rare that, that you do, that you, that you do that and I applaud you for it, but I wanna point out that how unique it was, right? Because if you were all truly independent people up here, um, you would, you would be voting no on things, you'd be holding things more often, you know, what, what, what's actually happening is that the city, uh, city attorneys, this is my interpretation, don't turn me from wrong, city attorneys are putting together all of the, um, the ordinances and then you're having the agenda meeting immediately before this meeting. Other towns put their agenda meeting many days before the city council meeting, so that you all might have an opportunity to review the material, understand it thoroughly and then give your independent assessment, right? But what happens here is everyone votes yes, if it's on the paper, you're supposed to vote yes and most of the time, that's what happens, right? So the agenda meeting should be days before that, so they do it in other towns, um, and it, it's, it's so much bigger than that. And that's why, you know, I worked on the, on the war campaign and I ran for, uh, Democratic Committee and I was illegally taken off by, by Mr. Tracy, who I think is a really, I personally think that he's a good person, I think he's a good apple, but the machine, the institution forces his hand and kicks me off of the ballot illegally and then I have to go get a lawyer and, and win in court and get put back on the ballot, you know? And that kind of thing is the problem, right? Where, uh, it's run like a kingdom instead of like, like, people want to say it's run like business, it's not run like a business, it's run like a kingdom. Running like a business wouldn't be so good either, it should be, it should be run like a competent bureaucracy that, that is meeting the needs of the citizens and, and, um, a few good apples can't, can't change it, what we need is institutional reform, so that's, that's the point.
I just have a reasonable
Tiffany Dougal, um, from the Somerset side of New Brunswick, um, so much corruption going on, I don't, I don't know where to start, but, um, I touched on, uh, with brother Shabazz at, uh, at Mitchell. I did, uh, attend his, uh, hearing with, um, court officer, Charlie Gable, and after I spoke with her and, uh, the, uh, the judge, he set up a date to, uh, hold my hearing, but after that, a short time after that, I had a death in the family, I had a death for my brother, so I called her office and I canceled the, um, the hearing and, um, mentally right now, I'm not able to pursue that right now, so I'm gonna wait, you know, until the new year and then I'm gonna call her and schedule a new, uh, a new date and she, uh, Mr. Hamilton did send me a paper, uh, you know, basically saying what I said, um, but hearing everything that I heard at his case, you know, and, and seeing the long process that he's going through, you know, it, you know, I got great concern, you know, because for one, you know, the officer that is involved in his cases, involved because for one, you know, the officer that is involved in his case is involved in my case, uh, I believe his name was Gregus, Officer Gregus. And, um, in my particular case, he planted marijuana on me, illegally arrested me and seized my money and eventually I got my money back. I'm sure you know that, I done said it like a thousand times here, but, um, it seems like the system that is put forth isn't working, you know? And like, uh, Charlie said, you know, Charlie Gaden is supposed to be for the community, but, you know, at that hearing, she cross-exam, like she was kind of like badgering him and I'm like, wow, like you're supposed to be for us, but it seems like you're against us. And she proved that numerous times, you know, by giving him the runaround and doing different things and it's like, I'm kind of scared to go through that, to follow that process. I mean, he's the first one to do it in two years. And, um, I understand that you wanted to go through the process to see if it works, but seems like to me, I don't know everything, I'm not that smart, but it seems like to me the process isn't working, you know? And I'm kind of scared to put forth the information in my case because of what he's going through. And just like him, I have a strong case, you know? I came and I listened, I took the day off at work and I videotaped, you know, his, uh, his case and he presented some real strong evidence, you know? He proved without a reasonable doubt that those officers lied and still, you know, two months later, he still doesn't have a, you know, a, um, answer to what, you know? And to me, it was pretty, you know, it was pretty clear, like what happened, officers lied and, you know, they were wrong and so forth and so on, but he still didn't get an answer. And I'm just seeing, is there another route that I can take? Cause I'm, I'm not confident in that hearing thing that you guys got set up, that, not even you guys, that, uh, what's his name, Mayor Cahill set up. Is there another process that I can follow or, you know, cause I'm greatly concerned, you know, cause you guys put this off, you, you put this procedure in place and I guess you expect nobody to follow it, but, I mean, you barked up the wrong tree, he's doing it, you know? He's been doing it for two, for the past two years. And he's doing it and he's following the steps and still he's getting a hard time. I don't think that's fair and I don't want to go through the same process, you know? I know what those officers did to me, I have two independent witnesses that aren't related to me and they came to court, you know, for like a year and a half straight, they kept coming, they kept coming. The lady, one of the ladies had to take, she got kids, she kept taking off of work just to come for me. So, I told her, I said, "Well, no, you come this time and we're gonna see the judge and you can just tell what happened, tell the truth and tell what happened," and that be that. But every time we came, nobody showed up, nobody showed up, the cops weren't coming. I'm like, "Where are they?" Next thing you know, it, two years later, two or three years later, my, my charges get dismissed, all my money gets returned. And I'm like, wow, like, I had to go through that whole process just for that to happen and it seemed like they were bluffing me. And my own lawyer told me, "Well, why don't you go out there and why don't you plead guilty to this and, you know, get half of your money back?" I said, "No, I'm getting all of my money back, because I got bank statements that show, because I, I, I withdrew from my bank account that day before." And I know I didn't have no weed on me. The cops threw me around all types of places and, and searched me like three or four times before, before throwing me into the police cruiser. And then all of a sudden, in their report, they said they found marijuana in the back, the backseat of the car. And I'm like, okay then, if you found marijuana, let's go to trial, you gotta prove it now. So, then that's what I, you know, I, I, I got, I hired my lawyer, I presented my case, I kept coming, I went to court like six or seven times. And then next thing you know, my charges just get dismissed and these officers are still working on the, on the force. And it just, you know, it just bothers, bothers me that that cop did that to me, it was Officer Quick and Officer Gregus, they did that to me. And Officer Gregus violated his rights, but they're still working on the force. And then you guys expect us to trust in the system, but the system ain't working. And it's like, you know, Charlie seemed like she, you know, I guess she ain't got nothing to say to me, you know, but, I mean, what's going on? You, you can't fault me for being concerned and I'm, I'm, I'm asking, you know, what else can I do?
At this point, the only thing is for any complaints that they put in, in, for internal affairs during that time that Sergeant Robo stayed at, the process that it was instituted